Go ahead and get started. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, at 4:00 PM, City Council Compris Room 2054, Building 1, Second Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to conduct public briefings regarding the fiscal year 2024/25 Resource Management Plan, non-departmental budgets, city council discussion of proposed 2024 Resource Management Plan, and council comments as listed in the public agenda. At 6:00 PM, the City Council will reconvene in the City Council Chamber to consider ordinance resolution requiring collective bargaining as listed in the published agenda. If you wish to make comments via WebEx during the meeting, please follow the two-step process. Register for the WebEx at hps@vbswebex.com, and then to register with the City Clerk's Office, calling 757-385-4303 prior to 5:00 PM on April 30th, 2024. The special formal session will be broadcast on cable TV, virginbeach.gov, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the special formal session, an email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay? We'll go ahead. Ready?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, to kick off your discussion on the proposed budget, Katie James from the Budget Department, who's the Deputy Director, will give council an overview of the non-departmental portion of the budget.
Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm Katie James, and as Patrick said, I'm the Deputy Director of Budget. Today, I'm going to present on non-departmental. While itself is a pretty generic term, it houses a lot of things that affect citizens and employees all over the city. Each of the programs that I'll talk about are managed by tons of city departments, including planning, audit, finance, human resources, public works, and of course, budget management services. Maybe I can do this. Sounds like you get to move the slides, Kevin. Thought so. There. All right. So now they figure that out, sorry. This slide is just a visual representation of all the programs and services that make up the $49.5 million allocation to non-departmental. With the exception of a small portion in the tip fund, this budget is primarily located in the city's general fund. All right, so I'm going to spend a lot of time on this slide. There are a lot of numbers, but I think I can go over it pretty quickly. So the first one is regional grants, which we are all familiar with. It's the umbrella term for payments that the city makes to nonprofits, quasi-governmental organizations, and public universities. I have listed here, on a separate line, is the payment to the Virginia Beach rescue squads. That's because in FY '24, it was included in EMS's budget, and this year, we're including it with the rest of the grants to be more consistent. The year-over-year decrease is the result of the 2% reduction to each non-MOU-based organization, which we'll talk more about in a minute, as well as the removal of any one-time funding that was included in last year's budget. So the next one here is Hampton Roads Transit. It's the city's share of the cost to operate HRT. It's increasing just over 5%, or actually, just at 5%. And the cost, like I mentioned before, is mostly in the general fund, but a small portion, I think about $1.5 million, is within the tip fund, and that funds the trolleys in the resort area. The amount for each locality in the Hampton Roads region is calculated based on HRT's transportation service plan. The next one is community organization grants, also called COG, which is supported by a City Council-appointed committee, and Budget Management Services provides the staff support. The FY '24 allocation goes back to the historical 1.1 per capita, when FY '24 had a $200-ish $1,000 increase with one-time funds. The next one is benefits administration. It's the city's contribution towards the Consolidated Benefits Office, which is managed by Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The next one is employee special benefits, which includes a lot of things: retiree healthcare, our line-of-duty payments, employee service awards, the Employee Assistance Program, and retiree healthcare. This one's only increasing because line-of-duty payments are set to increase about $250,000. Line-of-duty is calculated by the Virginia Retirement System every two years, just like the rest of our VRS payments. It covers disability, death, and health benefits for qualified public safety officials. It's recalculated, like I said, every two years, and in FY '25, the dollar amount per person is $995. The next one's local vehicle registration, which is an estimate of the cost for the city to pay the DMV for processing payments for us. The next one's pretty self-explanatory. It's general government leases for the leased facilities we operate out of. Vehicle replacements. This one is the annual replacement for public works for the replacement of the white fleet and police vehicles. It doesn't include fire apparatus, waste management vehicles, or anything for public utilities. The next one is the public defender pays supplement. This has been in the budget for a couple of years. It's $15,000 for each public defender in the Virginia Beach Public Defender Office. And annually, the public defender has to provide a report to City Council. I think we sent that to you a couple of weeks ago. The next two are computer replacements and subscriptions. It's basically the city-wide cost of IT services. You may remember from every other department presentation, they had large increases for year-over-year costs related to IT. That's because here, there was a $13 million decrease. It's to show a better cost of accounting within the individual departments. The next one is independent financial services, or the city's external audit. The next one after that is the Committee Trust Fund. This is for committees that hold events that collect fees for attendance to offset the cost of that event. It's completely supported by its own revenue, and not within the general fund or the tip fund. And then the final one, I'll talk more about later, is revenue reimbursements, which is primarily for elderly and disabled tax relief. All right, so, for regional grants, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on regional grants since we spoke about them so much at the retreat. During the retreat, City Council gave us pretty clear guidance to reduce regional grants by 2%, unless they had an existing MOU with the city. This list here are the ones that have an existing MOU with the city or similar arrangements. You may notice that two of them went down. That's because they're population-based, and so they update them voluntarily every And I'm definitely not going to read all of these to you, but it is a full listing of the FY '25 proposed amounts by organization. It would include their 2% reduction. I did not include here the 14 organizations that received one-time funding in FY '24's reconciliation, because they're not receiving ongoing funding in FY '25, so it is just the however many organizations that are proposed to get funding. You may recall that FY '24 is the first year these organizations have to submit financial and programmatic reporting. That's due tomorrow. We started to receive a lot of them, and once we get them all in, we'll prepare a staff report for council and send them to you all at one time instead of piecemeal. But in theory, we should have them all tomorrow. Listed here are the organizations that we're aware of, that we're seeking additional city funding through the budget process. They're color-coded. I'm not really a color person, but I'm going to try to remember what I did it for. The black ones are organizations that receive regional grants already, and they were asking for additional funding during the initial regional grant process. And this is the amounts that they asked for above and beyond what they're already getting. The two in orange would be what I would consider new requests. The Center for Global Diplomacy did get one-time funding in FY '24, but it's not an ongoing grant, so I distinguish it there. And then the ones in green asked for additional funding through some means to City Council or presentations to City Council, but they receive funding elsewhere in the budget. For example, the food bank often gets a COG grant. They also receive funding through ARPA, or MOKA receives a regional grant and also gets something through Cultural Affairs. So that's the distinguishing thing there. So, community organization grants are pretty near and dear to me. I've been doing them since I started in 2017. I do have help now from someone in our office, but we really enjoy managing COG. As I mentioned before, it's a competitive grant process run by a council-appointed committee. It's a lot like the Arts and Humanities Commission that you hear so much about. Our staff provides the staff support, just collecting the application, making copies, answering questions, issuing payment, that sort of thing. Only nonprofit organizations are eligible, and they have to demonstrate that they serve Virginia Beach in some capacity. This year, the COG committee worked really hard to modify their guidelines to allow for smaller organizations to qualify for funding, and I think it was pretty successful. The FY '25 application period will open sometime in late summer, early fall. It depends on the schedule of the committee. But as I mentioned before, the budget is just under $500,000, back to 1.1 per capita. Also included here is the full list of the organizations that received awards in FY '24. They did two rounds of funding this year, which is unusual. COG usually only meets once, because it's a very labor-intensive process. The committee works really hard to ensure that they reach as many people in Virginia Beach as possible. They are very big into youth programming through organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club, but they also provide funding often to senior services for that portion of our community as well. In this year's two rounds of funding, they received about 45 organizations with applications, with a total request of just over $2.5 million, and they had $707,000 to award. And now switching to something completely different than regional COG grants, and I might need Kevin's help here, but I think I got it. So anyway, I'm going to talk about the elderly and disabled tax relief program, which is included within non-departmental. This slide is a snapshot of the current number of participants enrolled in the program, including the amount or percentage of their exemption, the threshold of the exemption, and the amount of tax relief provided. In some form, this program has existed since 1973, first state code. In the beginning in 2011, cities have had the flexibility to determine their own eligibility standards, and Virginia Beach does update this annually as a part of the budget. We update the thresholds you see here, and I'll show you on the next slide. It might make a little bit more sense. We update them to mirror the average increase in value in a single-family home. If you see here in FY '24, the 100% exemption, I don't know if there's a pointer, the 100% exemption threshold is $56,000, but in FY '25, that amount will increase to nearly 60,000 for 100% exemption. And similarly, the tax-free income threshold is currently $96,405, but in FY '25, it will increase to just over $102,000. So like I mentioned, every year, we update the thresholds, and every three years, per the task force's recommendation, we provide a comparison of this city's program to neighboring localities to the City Council. We always include it in the executive summary, but I also have it summarized here. The portion in the executive summary document goes into a lot of detail. As you can see from this table, it may seem like other localities in the region are comparable to us, but Virginia Beach has the highest maximum income to receive relief, and our program is not capped by home value where other neighboring cities such as Suffolk are. So to put that into context, a million-dollar home in Virginia Beach could receive 100% exemption, but in Suffolk, the tax relief would be capped at, I think, the median home So please note that this is just the city's discretionary elderly and disabled tax relief program. It equals about $15 million in FY '25, which is just under 2 cents of the real estate tax. It does not include the state-mandated Veterans Tax Relief Program, which is another estimated $27.9 million with about 6,000 people enrolled. That program sees nearly 24% growth annually and has grown by over 5,000 participants since 2011. And that's it.
Any questions? Patrick.
So, Mr. Mayor, again, that was just a quick overview of the non-departmental. So to go to this, staff will answer any question that you all have about this presentation. If you all have other questions about the proposed budget, we'll be able to answer those as well. But also, council asks for this time for them to discuss the budget amongst themselves, should council desire to do that.
Okay, anybody? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question about the non-MOU regional organizational grants. Were there any of those that received more than a 2% reduction, or were they across the board too?
They were all 2%, except for ones that received additional one-time funding in FY '24, which I believe was the African-American Cultural Center and?
COG.
One more. I'll get it to you.
COG, I think.
Well, COG, and then there was something else.
All right, so you managed.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay. I should have remembered that, but there's another one.
Okay. And for the elderly and disabled tax relief, I saw that it excludes, the net worth calculation excludes the principal residence?
Yes.
And then no more than 10 acres of property. What's the rationale there?
I guess it was the task force's recommendation. Kevin?
So, council member, the reason for excluding that from the overall eligibility of the assets would be to lower that. Obviously, if you were to take into account, for example, someone's 401K in combination with their home, then, you know, it could be a pretty high asset value that could exclude them from eligibility within the program. So I think the intent has always been not to allow the home to penalize the individual for being eligible from the program, but instead, it's looking at additional assets.
Yeah, I probably just read that wrong. I was thinking that it was an additional 10 acres of property, but it was the home and then up to 10 acres.
Correct.
I got you. Thank you.
And what's the age requirement on this?
65 years.
65, okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, Amelia?
I want to thank you for including the Virginia Westland to continue to do what they do, because that is very important with the workforce and so forth. Someone may look at it and say, it's a lot that they are getting, but with the 2%, they're still in the upper tier, able to function with what they have.
Okay, anybody else? Chris?
A question for staff. With the 5,117 elderly and disabled, could we get maybe IT to put that within a map so we could see district where those homes sit?
I could try.
Because we are having such a, we talked about affordable housing. I'd be interested to see where that breakdown, if it's in Aragona, or if it's, I couldn't imagine it being in the North End, Fungo, or even District 8. I'd love to see that. If we could get IT to put that into a map for us.
I think we'll have to ask the Commissioner of Revenue, but then we can try, but Dana's coming.
So, yeah, we'll work with IT to get it. It won't be as granular as you might think so, but we'll try to do neighborhood-specific so that we don't divulge individual income information.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Sabrina?
And not sure how it relates to this information here. And I was doing some research, making an inquiry regarding expanding the threshold to be more inclusive, to provide senior tax relief. And so recently, I was made aware that there were 43 applications that were submitted for tax relief, and about 37 were rejected because of their overall asset level. It was, the asset level was over $461,000, so they were certainly declined. And so my thought is, in terms of expanding that threshold, if we were to expand the threshold from the $350,000 limit or bracket, it would have included, to my understanding, those 37 that were rejected. And so that information that I have, I don't know how it relates to the relief plan you have here, but as it relates to our current application process and the number that were rejected, there was quite a few. And so how can we, and you know, as a body, think about this, how can we mitigate that issue by increasing the threshold to that amount to be more inclusive?
It looks like you want to answer, Kevin. Come on. I mean, we absolutely could. As part of the budget process, we could estimate the amount it would cost, but we wouldn't know except for the people who were applied and rejected. There's probably people who haven't applied that would also be rejected under the current thresholds. So we could estimate, but we wouldn't know for sure how much it would cost until we did it.
So it seems that out of those 43 applications, the 37 that were rejected, it looks like the amount of tax income that would have been lost would be about $121,286 for those 37 applications. So that's something I would like to explore in terms of creating more, of an expansion and being more inclusive for those who are seeking tax relief, so that we can have a higher percentage of folks who are qualified and receive that assistance instead of being rejected.
Council member, something else for consideration, I know the assets is certainly a component of the financial overall review, but something I just want to also point out is the freeze program. So we often talk about the exemption, but that is another opportunity and avenue, just to explain that one a little bit more. If someone meets the overall parameters of the program, and they certainly have almost double the income threshold of flexibility to qualify for that program, then what that freeze means is if they qualify and they enroll, they can be held harmless from assessment growth as long as they're eligible in that. So in other words, their tax rate, or the amount that they pay last year would be the amount that they would continue to pay. They wouldn't see a growth in that. So that's another program that I thought might just be worth noting. I know it's mentioned as a freeze, and we often talk about the exemption to where they don't have to pay it, but the freeze is another opportunity and avenue for them to enroll in.
That's another program.
It's administered as the part of the, by the Commissioner of Revenue as part of the overall tax relief program, but it's just one of the multiple tools that they have.
And it seems like we have not really modified that threshold since 2006, so we might want to consider maybe another modification in 2024.
So the threshold that we would be able to modify if directed by council would be the next year's program. So the current year program, as was reflected on the previous slide, sorry, Katie, that's current enrollment in the various programs, 100% exemption all the way down to the freeze program for the current year. So if City Council were to give us direction to change that asset threshold, it would be what would go into effect for next fiscal year that the Commissioner of Revenue would use to review eligibility. And just the benchmarking, I know Katie covered it, but the benchmarking does have Virginia Beach in line and tied with two, or excuse, two other Hampton Roads localities in terms of that asset, maximum financial asset threshold.
Can you send me some information on that detail and what you just mentioned? And let's see, I think it would be beneficial to at least pursue or determining how we could pursue that for next year, because as I mentioned, with 43 applications, 37 being rejected, we might want to look into that. If you could send me some information, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
The last time that we had a major review of this must have been, what, five or six years ago. We used to allow the deferral, but we opted not to allow deferral anymore. But I think when you look at the overall, that the tax relief that we are giving now is over $14 million, and it's over 5,000 people. Is that, I mean, that's what I think I'm reading here. So we have 5,117 people enrolled in the program, and the benefits that we give are now in excess of $14 million, which I think is pretty phenomenal. And then we have the Veterans Relief Program, which is even more substantial. And so what we have to realize is when we're giving this relief, it means that somebody else has to pick up the difference. And so we always want to try to balance things out, and it's really pretty hard to do. But I think when we look at what the other cities in our region are doing, Virginia Beach has got by far the most generous program. And when we look at, and I know we have been talking about that allocation, the maximum financial assets of $350,000, is whether it needed to be adjusted. But of course, that's in addition to the home and 10 acres of property. I noticed that you've got an asterisk there by Virginia Beach on that. Do the other cities allow that same exemption, or is that something unique to Virginia Beach? The no more than, the dwelling and no more than 10 acres of property, or did y'all, you just don't know?
I'm not certain. I believe the others exclude the home value, but in terms of the acres, and Dana to the rest.
So the standard program is only one acre, but state law allows you to go up to 10 acres. And I believe this council has taken a position pretty early on that, to the extent that someone's dwelling is on five acres or up to 10 acres, that they would include the land with the dwelling.
Right, so that makes sure that we're able to exempt the program, the house and its property, pretty much. But when I look at, you know, what the other cities in the region are doing, we are far in excess. And I think that really speaks tremendously for us. And I know we would like to exempt everybody from taxes, but it doesn't work that way. So the only other thing that we are not doing that some others are doing is a deferral program, which then would just allow the tax to be deferred to a time in the future when perhaps the house was sold and then it could be recovered. So that way, they would be not having to pay the tax at this time, but would be able to defer it. So we have had that in the past, and you notice some of the other cities do still have the deferral. So if we wanted to do something else, I think that would probably be where we might want to look.
If I may add, so if you recall, when the task force looked at this, they found that, I think, there was 17... there were 17 deferrals citywide. And because its utilization was so far less than the two other programs, I think that's why the position was taken to let that one go and try to give people two choices instead of three.
Right, but we had had it in the past and like I say, other localities do have it, but we had opted to take that out. And I think now that we automatically review this, rather than letting it get way out of whack like it has in the past, is very important because with these assessment changes and so forth, we need to stay on top of this program to stay current. But these numbers of having over 5,000 people in this program with a tax relief of over 14 million is, I think, really substantial. I don't think we need to apologize for anything.
Okay, Rosemary, Josh and Sabrina.
Thank you, Barbara. Well said, and if you take this 14 million and then you include the line of duty and the veterans, that's $43 million in tax relief that we're giving, which that means, put it in context, that's five and a half cents on the real estate tax. Five and a half cents on the real estate tax that we're exempting, which is all worthy. I'm not saying it's not a worthy cause, it really is. What also means is, Barbara said, someone else has to pay for it and there are a lot of young families out there that, you know, have children, having to go buy shoes.
Young families are having the biggest crunch, who are trying to get started and they don't have any.
They're trying to get started and they're trying to buy a house and they've got children and they're having to pick up and pay for that 43 million because the cost of government still is the same, depends on, you know, how it's going to pay for it. So I think we do a pretty good job and we're pretty generous. And I forgot the numbers, but I do remember that the veterans went up 25% this year.
Yes ma'am.
And do we have a handle on, this is a growing number?
It's been growing about 24% annually for the last several years. It's grown over 5,000 people since 2011.
So that's something, and I don't think we have a choice on that, is that right?
Correct.
That's mandated by the state and we have to give that, so that's almost $10 million.
There have been legislative proposals for the state to at least offset some of these, since this was a state priority, but none of those proposals have carried in the General Assembly. So it remains purely a local offset.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh and Sabrina.
Just following up on the vice mayor's line of questioning, I remember seeing, I want to see maybe in the five-year forecast or perhaps during the retreat, that over the next four, five, six years, that number plus the veterans' tax relief is, is set to almost double or so, is that, is that right?
That's correct. We can provide you what we did at the five-year forecast again, but if the trends stay the same, yes.
Yeah, okay. And question about the deferral program, when we had it, was that tied to a different income threshold or maximum asset value or what, what were the, do you remember what the categories were?
It tracked the 20% bound of the partial exemption and then the net asset was the same at 350.
And I know we probably hear a lot from folks who are on fixed incomes and who have most of their assets tied up in retirement accounts, who then, you know, in the face of rising assessments and that need to invade those retirement accounts or face with those kinds of situations and then could potentially be penalized. One, one might argue that's what saving is for, on the one hand, but, but on the other hand, certainly recognizing that, that, that folks are potentially being penalized for, you know, for dipping into the retirement, is, is that something that we could, if we, if we chose to consider deferral as a, as an option, is that something that we might be able to consider as an option to, to factor in in terms of eligibility?
You can absolutely do that. You also have the choice of things you would like to include in the income calculations or things you would like to exclude or things you want to include in the net financial worth or exclude. When they changed the Virginia Constitution about 10 years ago, it basically put it down to the localities to set the rules since, you know, at least this program, it's pretty much voluntary on y'all, so you could set the rules and then once the rules are there, they're applied uniformly.
Thank you. Okay, Sabrina.
Also looking at the information that we talked about in our retreat, just kind of see how we have been able to progress from the retreat and looking at some of the things we talked about. And I think one of the things I would say I remember talking about was just really looking at areas of tax relief, expenditures, revenue, making sure we're looking at new avenues of tax, of revenue, but also making sure that what we have, we're aligning that with the resident survey, mission of the city and those things. And I, I don't know if that's something that, you know, has certainly been done here, but what I would also say is that in terms of our discussions, we did talk about just really looking at everything to see what we could do better. And so when I mention the additional expansion of relief for our seniors, that is trying to find a different, a different avenue, looking at a way to see how we can do things better, which we talked about we would do in the retreat. And so when I bring that up, that is a follow-up on our conversations because we are looking, everything is on the table, we said. We're going to look at ways in terms, and I see that we did have an opportunity, our staff did have an opportunity to look at those dedications and reduce that, which is great, but just want to make sure we keep in mind that we also have to look at new ways and expanding programs, not just the way we've all, always done things. Sure, our program is robust, sure, it's a great benefit, sure, in comparison to other cities, we're doing a great job. However, the task of the retreat was to find other ways to improve what we're doing and find, you know, new ways. And so to that effect, I offered the information about expanding relief for our seniors.
Okay, Jennifer and then Michael.
I wrote down my thoughts so I could get it right and not miss anything. It's not long, but please bear with me. Okay, so first I want to begin by commending council for attempting to address resident concerns on tax relief. And I also want to commend our city manager and budget director for putting together a budget that used attrition savings and appropriately redirects capacities from dedications to ensure our fire department can increase its staff to get closer to addressing mandatory holdover issues. Our city employees maintain our city services and they are going to receive a much-needed pay increase. I recognize that the budget ultimately reflects a majority of values for people at the table, so not each of us, we won't get exactly what we want. So we negotiate our different constituencies and their different and competing interests and try to prepare a budget that ultimately meets the city's needs. So this budget does a lot of good things. It maintains and continues services at a level that I think citizens desire and it supports our staff. So I'm prepared to support this budget, but I did want to share my concerns and reservations for the record. So my biggest concern is in the direction to lower the real estate tax rate to 97 cents and that's for two reasons. I've listened to public comment and we've received emails and different organizations have written us letters, so trying to factor all of that in. So for me, my concerns, they come down to two issues. The first is the impact of reducing the real estate tax rate on fully funding our schools and on funding the mounting and growing priorities that our city faces, including flood mitigation, addressing sea level rise and completing important CIP projects, and all of these are experiencing cost increases. Another concern I have is the impact of this tax relief on residents. My question is how far-reaching is this impact? And I know we're having a conversation about relief in, in different ways, so there are a lot of residents who won't feel the effect of this real estate reduction in a meaningful way, for example renters or people who still pay a mortgage. So if we're going to be serious about tax relief, I'd like to explore all the options available to us to impact as many residents as possible. So as part of reconciliation, I'd like for, and it sounds like I've heard this at the tables, this isn't necessarily original to me, but support to, as part of our reconciliation, include language to direct the city manager to identify opportunities for relief that's available to taxpaying residents who don't own their home that we can consider as part of our next budget process. So it may not, it won't be in this one, but going forward, what are ways that we can implement tax relief that touch more residents?
Yeah, thank you. Michael and then Josh and Sabrina.
Thank you. Could you go back to the regional grant slide? I guess I have a different, I mean, I, yeah, that one, thank you. I, I don't remember, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I don't remember from the retreat giving direction for a 2% across-the-board reduction. It, it may have happened and I failed to remember it, is that?
Yeah, so, I see it, so we went.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Yep, we went to council, we said hit all funds, including schools, dedications.
For a 2% reduction, okay. So I guess, you know, I, and that's fine. I understand a reduction because, but, but some of these organizations are receiving, 2% is 2%, it's not going to make a break. But it kind of feels like we took a hatchet to this when a scalpel would, might have done the trick. And I also think it, this may have been the intent of the body, but I also think it avoids the difficult but necessary conversation of a discussion around these appropriations. Mrs. Henley mentioned something, it's been a long time since we've had a review, a thorough review, and, and I do think it has been a long time since we've had a review or a conversation about these types of particular grants. For example, we had a, quite a robust conversation about the Virginians for, for high-speed rail and although I did visit their website, we haven't heard from them in, I'm not sure how long, and I don't really know what they do, and not to pick on them, but I just, you know, I can live with 2% reduction because I, I recognize that we're making economies throughout the budget and I, I support that. But I also think when you're talking about students on the swim, for example, I don't know, where does that go? You know, $400 might make a big, might be fewer students who don't learn how to swim, they don't have the capacity, so, and I could go on. Stop Inc. does incredible workforce program, I'm going to call them all out, but I, I don't know. I, I think we should, should be more strategic about this approach and that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, Patrick and then Josh and Sabrina.
And council has been, the past two or three, by the side of the calendar, to clarify. We have been kind of, we're actually, of the scrutiny on this portion of the budget, right? So I think last year, council lacks us to gather all kinds of information as it relates to what's your mission, what's your impact, right? Oh, we've collected that, right? And then I think we brought that into this process as well. And then discommunication as well is basically saying, hey, council's taken some iterative steps of kind of figure out how best to right-size the city's budget, you know, so there's a haircut, you know? Council could take another step towards putting these groups, so further notice, maybe including language in a reconciliation process for us to let them know that funding may not necessarily be guaranteed for next year and they may need to apply for funding and not assume that they're going to get funding, right? You know, so council could take us, we could take it to another path because we have been putting these groups unnoticed that the status quo may not be the status quo going forward, you know? So that is something that council could ask us to look into if you all want to. Kevin, I don't know if there's anything to add in terms of what we've done the past couple of years.
If, if I could just follow up to say, I, I do, I can see that as a continuum, that this is a haircut, to borrow your phrase, that we're going, that everyone's going to take this year and that also could serve as notice that moving forward, we'll be having discussions about these grants and about the impact. And I'm just going over the list and, you know, as we've explored, the inflationary pressures on these organizations and, I think most importantly, the people they serve is rising, it's not decreasing. So their cost of business is going up, their cost of service is going up per person served and, and yet we're making across-the-board reductions rather than possibly making strategic choices about whether or not these partnerships still serve the city of Virginia Beach in the most impactful way possible. That's the conversation we really should be having, but it's more, feels like it's more convenient to have the other. And, and maybe, maybe you're right, maybe this is a good signal that we're going to be more scrutinizing these partnerships in the future and that's something I'll look forward to participating in next year.
And one last thing, Mary, before you go. If council wants, and obviously in a reconciliation, we could draft some language that affect the kind of signal that we can communicate to these groups that the council will be a little bit more deliberate in how they consider these conversations amongst the council and what the priorities are as it relates to these organizations. This food for thought doesn't need to happen now because I mean, that could be something that council asks for us to consider as part of reconciliation.
Okay, Josh and Sabrina.
Thank you. And I, since we were, we began offering our general thoughts about the budget, I would like to concur with Councilwoman Rouse in that I, I also am, you know, thankful to the manager and staff for preparing a balanced budget that, that reflected what we had asked for in the retreat. I am thankful it's only a two-cent reduction and not a four or seven-cent reduction like what we were talking about because I think that, that those impacts would, would be very heartfelt throughout the organization and create some additional difficult choices. But I, I am sensitive as well to the criticism that we've heard from the public and from other community organizations that real estate tax relief only really benefits those who own real estate and, including commercial real estate. So in many cases, folks who own property in Virginia Beach, residential property and commercial property are seeing the benefit twice. And the relief doesn't reach, in my opinion, you know, people who, who may need it the most, who, who don't own real estate, people who rent. And I, I would, I would agree and, and join in the request that the city manager work with the budget director to explore ways to target relief to those who need it most. I know we had a little bit of that discussion last year, some analysis regarding, you know, surrounding the personal property tax and vehicle registration and, you know, some of the other levers that we can pull because everybody pays those. And I mean, obviously, an issue of that is, those are calendar year taxes and, and we, like, if we did anything right now, people wouldn't see it until April and, you know, in many instances, the relief may, you know, the, the juice may not be worth the squeeze because of the, the magnitude of the relief. So I would, I guess, challenge you and staff to look for ways to provide relief that are, that are, that, that find untapped existing alternative revenue sources that we may not be using. We can only tax what we're authorized to tax, but maybe we need to look at how and what we're taxing. And then, you know, hopefully, hopefully we can do that in a way that is pretty close to revenue neutral. And, and so I would, again, just join in that request that, that we, if we really want to talk about tax relief, I understand, you know, real estate taxpayers, you know, saddle the lion's share of, of our city budget, but there's a lot of other people out there who need the relief and we're not touching them.
Okay, thank you, Sabrina, and then more.
Wanted to kind of follow up on, I remember last year when I talked about the budget and other opportunities for tax relief, still sounds like it's an ongoing request here from what I'm hearing. But in that conversation and in that request, I remember going to the retreat and then I remember the two-cent reduction. Now, when I talked about tax relief, I was certainly talking about finding other ways in our current programs to provide further relief. That was really the essence of. That was really the essence of my concern, but the two cents, I, I was just trying to remember where it came from. Who made the decision of two cents? I, I don't remember having a specific conversation as a body to say we were going with two cents. And I asked the question-
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I asked, yeah, I just want to finish, but, and I asked the question recently, you know, was there a conversation I missed? Was there a meeting I missed where two cents came up? And I, I, I don't, I didn't receive it. Well, the answer that I received was there was no definitive decision made in a meeting, in a conversation. I don't remember having it, but I do know it was presented at the retreat and we were told the manager's budget included a two-cent reduction. And so while that's certainly fine, I don't recall being a part of that decision stating that that was the answer be-all to fix the issues or the concerns that we were looking at to provide overall tax relief for citizens. And I think we're hearing that in the different public hearings. People are talking about that two cents in terms of how it really impacts arts, culture, those things in other areas, and so when you say a two-cent rate deduction, for me, I have to understand where that came from. I understand what was provided for us, but I don't remember making that decision, I don't remember asking for that, I just remember being told at a retreat that this is what we were going to focus on. So I just want to make that clear in terms of my understanding, and so that's the reason why I am continuing and would like to continue to find other tax relief resolutions to this issue to address citizens' concerns, not necessarily a two-cent tax deduction.
Okay, Worth.
Any response, Amelia?
Yes, I was just answering that. I brought it up at the retreat, and nobody at that time reacted to say, no, I brought it up. And instead, our city manager, and then we're looking at possibility, if we're going to look at this, it will include maybe cutting certain things across the board. That's how that conversation went. It was only later that now people are asking, suddenly everyone's finding out those, oops, maybe we did this. Even then, we did it on real estate, and everyone does not have a resident, like we're saying now, maybe even looking later on, on property tax, and even for property tax, everyone doesn't own a car. So that is the nature of the beast. No matter how you look at it, one way or the other, somebody for a minute will be short-changed in some way, and it could have gone four, five, but everyone was at the table, and I mentioned this, and nobody else said, nope, I don't agree with it. So I take ownership of bringing that up, trying to look at some form of relief for people, and maybe I could have said 2% here, 2% there, but I did put it on the table.
Okay, if, if I could also say, I, I think the initial charge, if I recall, was to look at a revenue-neutral budget.
Right.
And then we came back and found out there were severe draconian cuts and cuts in personnel and everything, so that's how we're kind of gravitating. Sabrina.
So I, I would just like to say, I, I think that's fair, the, the response, I think it's fair. I think also, when you say two cents reduction, it's like, what does that look like? And I can't speak for anybody else, at the time, there was certainly no vote taken, nor would it have been, but I think when you say a 2% decrease, then the other part is, well, what does that look like? And for me, it's trying to see what does that look like, and I've seen what it looks like, and that's why I would say, let's look at other alternatives.
Okay, Worth and then Rosemary.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and just to weigh in on the general discussion on the budget. Um, Sabrina said, let's look at all forms, whether it be keep the, the real estate mill rate at 99 cents or reduce it. I always feel like there's ways to reduce spending and taxes. I realize that a two cents reduction is regressive. Are there other ways to cut taxes and it's personal taxes, that's even more regressive? So I do also challenge staff to find ways to, to have, to have, provide relief and not in the form of real estate taxes. Having said apartment, and I realize for sure that apartment, our renters, the, the ownership is reduced taxes, so hopefully the owners will reduce the rent, although that's, we don't control that and I challenge that as well, as I see folks agreeing with that. All that being said, you know, we did look at the dedicated funds this year, or the city manager did, and I think that's a creative way to look at this, and when I hear, by the way back on taxes, I did hear from a lot of folks in my district, it got 20, 30, even 40% assessment increases. Of course, that reflects their value increases, but no doubt, tax, taxes go up dramatically in a lot of parts of my district. So I, I'm very sensitive to tax increases on, on residences. Again, what Councilwoman Rouse and Councilman Shulman said, 99 cents, what, what does that do next year? I think we're going to have to address that next year. I'm, I'm concerned about the future, I'm concerned about not fully funding our schools, but back to my comment about use of dedicated funds, I think that spreads the pain, if you will, across the city. I will remind everyone, the tip fund was hit for $500,000, and that, and that if we include dedicated funds from the tip fund for admissions tax to the degree of 20%, which I support, that also comes from the tip fund. I'm also reminding folks at the, at the resort where I represent, that over about a five or seven-year period, $250 million comes from the tip fund for Atlantic Park, for $153 million, for Reimagined Atlantic Avenue, for $48 million, and this draft budget is $60 million, for Rudy Loop, so approximately $250 million from the tip fund. So the Resort and Oceanfront is getting a, a nice hit from, support from the tip fund, and I think we should look at all forms of dedicated funds for this budget and a robust discussion in the future. And then finally, always reminded of the future cost of stormwater mitigation, the bond referendum, the $567 million, that will be close to a billion dollars, we'll see how much grant money we can get. But that's 4.1 cents on the mill rate that we absorbed last year, it should be considered in this, absorbing it this year in 97 cents, so that's a future piper if we have to pay that we need to consider in the future. Thank you.
And Rosemary.
I want to compliment the staff on the most extensive budget season we've ever had, and you started out with the retreat, and it was an incredible presentation that you did at the retreat, really. We spent two days on the budget at the very beginning, and you laid out so many different things, and there was a lot of conversation, including the two cents all the way up to revenue neutral, and the staff responded to what they heard. The mill rate is, it fluctuates, depends on the needs, and mostly a lot of it on the assessments. When I got on council, it was $1.22. Barbara, you remember those days?
I do.
And it went down as low as 89 cents, and then we've had-
We've made good investments in our major industries through the tip and the other ways.
And we, we, so we've stayed at from 89 cents to $1.22, and then when we had the housing bust in 2008, we lost so much revenue then, and we held on, but 2012, we just couldn't do it any longer. Our teachers, they had gotten an $80 million cut from the state in education, they needed raises, and so we raised it six cents that year, six cents, which is a lot, and we dedicated four cents to education and two cents to transportation. So our, our citizens have been seeing a lot of increases in the assessments over the past few years, and yes, we did hold a line on the referendum, and we should be really proud of what we were able to do with that. And as Worth said, I've heard a lot of people that got huge assessments, including myself, over a two-year period, mine's gone up 68%. So it's, assessments are not the same all over the board. You know, some were small, some were large, but it averaged out, averaged out to 7%. So I, I think y'all did an amazing job, I think we've kept all the services. Schools are going to get another $18 million from the state when they finally decide to put up their budget. They're not going to cut K-12 education, that's one thing they're not going to do. So I think that we're, we're going to be in, in shape, and, I mean, we, we're not in a position we can just start throwing a whole lot of stuff in there, and everybody I've talked to has been pretty reasonable in what their asks have been for, on board, so hopefully with reconciliation, we'll be able to work out something that's, that's pretty reasonable. But it's, it's been a real, you guys did a tremendous job, and some of the presentations you've seen, I mean, I've been on council a long time, as, as this end of the table is, and some of the best presentations I've ever seen on the budget y'all presented to us this year. So you all should, you really all deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Uh, I'm going to kind of take a different tact. I, I'm just shocked of how we got here, because what we asked for was to see what one, the seven cents, like, seven cents looked like, and I was in the room, and I do recall Dr. Ross Hammond throwing out, you know, the two cents, and no one did, it was the end of the day, we, we, no one, you know, bit your head off, no one said, I don't agree, we just kind of, we, we went with it as a body and staff took direction, and a lot of the feedback that I received after that retreat from the community was how indecisive we appeared to be, and that the manager was really looking for direction, and we didn't give him all the direction necessary. In that conversation at the retreat, I did bring up, what I've heard is not a new idea, to look at the dedications, and we were supposed to, I just heard a little while ago that maybe we could be more strategic. What we didn't do with that conversation was be strategic, what we did was, we allowed that opportunity to come before us, and now we're looking at carving off one and a half million for specifically one, one area, arts and culture, and we have not had a conversation at this table, at any table, about the holistic approach of looking at dedications. We have untapped revenue, I represent the district with probably the most water outside of the ocean, and what we learned last week was, since the year 2000, if you own a boat, jet ski, a watercraft, there is, I think, a millionth of a penny you're paying. There's over 12,000 boats in Virginia Beach owners. I had a conversation with the commissioner of revenue, he advised me to not go here, but I'm going to go there. That's 12,000 boats, I think 2,000 of them are large craft, which could be considered yachts, and they're not paying taxes on these, personal property taxes on their boats. I don't own a boat, I have a lot of friends that do, and I was shocked because we have a small business and on a $30,000 vehicle that many people purchase, their personal property taxes are almost $800 to $1,000. Most of the boats that I see on the Manhattan River, in the inlet, in and around, these boatels are worth far more than $30,000, and I, I was, my head got cut off almost by some individuals for daring to, to look at policies from 25 years ago, but there's a policy right there, if 12,000 boats, Patrick, I know you're the, you're the mathematician at the table, and let's say they average $30,000 in value, but I know a Grady White does not, that's probably $15 million in annual revenue that these owners, and again, I'm not going to get a lot of kudos for this, because many of them live in District 8, have had 25 years of reprieve. In terms of this bold approach, I don't think we're being that bold. I've heard over and over the draconian cuts, it's not a two-cent tax cut, it may be a two-cent reduction from where we were, but Patrick, if, correct me if I'm wrong, what is the rate that is published in the paper where we start?
Can you, can you clarify, Kevin, the data here of, of process?
Too difficult to get to.
So if I could explain it, it's a statutory process where if you're going to accept assessment increase to your real estate book that results in more than a 1% increase in the revenue from real estate taxes, you're required to post a notice in the newspaper, it has four subsections, and then conduct a public hearing. So one of those subsections does provide a rate that would have the same amount of revenue as the previous year, and so that's called the, either the neutral rate or, anyways, it goes by the news, but yes.
Point. 72, okay, so we're not talking about raiding the schools, they're going to get more money if we start at 92 cents, and when you look at, I, I've, I just, I, I'm shocked because in the private sector and small business and in many other organizations, I have never heard commitments to not attempt to be leaner. When I was in corporate America, there was a program called the Six Sigma, and the goal of that program was to send individuals there, whether it was a black belt, a green belt, to find out how to get leaner, and I don't believe, and I apologize to the staff if, if you're offended, but I don't believe the city of Virginia Beach is as lean and as efficient as we can be in the area of personnel. And so the retreat was not this, I'm going to be cautious with my word, it wasn't a commandment to stay at two cents, but that was the direction the staff took and the city manager had to make decisions. And so I think the decision of the previous body to, as Councilman Shulman says, absorb the four and a half cents that the public said they wanted, and now look at us, we are in a position where that four and a half cents, had we done, or they done, council had done what the public asked, would have taken care of some of these inflationary costs, these rises, and if we do a two-cent reduction from 99 cents but a four and a half cents increase this year, we're still going to be nowhere near the billion we need. We talk about economic development, and Councilman Remick brought up the tip fund, which, I want to be clear, District One, D1, D1, baby.
I'm here.
Last year, you all contributed, your district produced $118 million in F and B sales. I want you to write that down. Work hard on this report. 118 million, I know you've got some sidewalks and ditches that haven't been taken care of, and the tip fund received from District One, $1.25 million. I'm not sure if all the D1 people are going to, went to the Odyssey concert this past weekend. District Two, Mrs. Henley, your restaurants, your hard-working business people, produced $91 million in F and B sales last year. Agriculture, working hard, margin raise, $968,000 to the tip fund. I was out there on a visit, I asked a couple, they don't see any benefits, they're not feeling the benefits of, of that contribution. D3, D3, all my business owners in D3, food and beverage, $176 million, food and beverage operators, small business owners. Ms. Wilson, you talked about families and the 2%, and it's pressuring, I'm the youngest at the table with children. My tax, my mortgage went up $300 a month. I know there was a woman that came before us and stated I was affluent, and I went home and told my wife I don't feel affluent. Nonetheless, I'm affluent. F and B from D3, $1.8 million, Kevin, to the tip fund. They're not excited about the, all the enhancements taking place at the Oceanfront. District Four, where I went to college, Amelia, Virginia Wesley, and D4, food and beverage, all the restaurants, Town Center, $200 million in F and B sales, and I know we're subsidizing the Sandler Center, I know, I know the tip paid for it, but we're still paying for it. Your tip contribution, Amelia, Dr. Ross Hammond, $2.1 million to the tip fund, so for all the individuals that are afraid to look at these dedications, these old policies, District Five, Vice Mayor at the Oceanfront, you guys are one of the leaders, $212 million. It makes sense to leave that money- It makes sense to leave that money down there. D6, Councilman Remick, $323 million at the oceanfront F and B, but only $3 million of it went to the tip. D7, $81 million. D7, $81 million. Centerville, Level Green. Of that, to the tip fund, almost $900,000. District Eight, hard-working individuals, Shore Drive, who's not considered to be in the resort area or have any impact to tourism, $150 million in F and B sales, these small business owners that we're talking about. $1.6 million to the tip fund. Rounding out, District Nine, Mr. Schulman, $118 million. Shore Drive, Chicks Beach, can't get a sidewalk. Tip fund, $1.2 million. D10, Jen for 10, $67 million, Green Run. All these local businesses paying into something they didn't agree to, but a policy that was set 25 years ago. $716,000 for a grand total of $17.9 million to the tip fund from small business owners. And if you deduct the $6 million from the resort districts, $12 million of hard-working local taxpayer dollars. This isn't tourism to the tip fund. And I continue to hear from members of certain commissions that I'm anti. No, I'm pragmatic and realistic. The city of Virginia Beach small business owners should not be forced to pay almost $12 million into something they don't agree to. So when we say, "How did we get to two cents?" When we say we need to be more strategic, look at different approaches, look at different revenues, we didn't do any of that. And this is for the public. We did not do any of it. We had one or two conversations. I've gotten a call from the Vice Mayor asking if I'm going to support the budget. If anything, we need to go... If we need to be bold and go to 93 cents, that would provide real relief. Or we need to go to $1.05 so we can stop hearing about all the inflationary pressures when we made a decision that the taxpayer said, "Increase my taxes to pay for the inflation, for the stormwater, for the flooding." And there was a decision made to do nothing, to keep it flat. And now what do we have at our doorstep? Residential homeowners carrying the burden, the burden, $660 million. Commercial only representing 16% of that. And that's, again, if I offend any of the donors, you're not writing checks anyways. Town Center, Marriott Restaurant, big hotels. How does the city of Virginia Beach have an oceanfront filled with oceanfront properties? Because the people in Little Neck, the people in Great Neck that live by the water and not even on the water, 30% increases to their land. And their request is, "Can you please ask the council if we can use the same methodology on my real estate as you're using on the big hotel and just basing on my income? I live in an $800,000 house, but my income's gone down. Just base my tax rate on my income." And so if we're going to look at, and we're going to be honest with the public, two cents is not aggressive. I'm making no commitments from District Eight to not be draconian. If we have to make cuts to staff, we have to be efficient. And every other organization, there's no commitment that you're going to keep your job if there's no rationale for it. Maybe that's bold, and maybe that's not the way we want to go, but we cannot continue to mislead the public into thinking we're reducing anything. If they hear... The public here today, Mr. Kevin Schadler said, "Flat rate is 92 cents." So we're not cutting. We didn't cut the arts from schools and music. That's not our decision. That's the school board's decision. We've been fair, but we have not had discussions around this table that related to being strategic. What we did was we saw opportunities, and when there were opportunities, we took advantage of them. Open up all the dedications, Mr. Manager. And let's really look at how we can provide relief. And as I said at the retreat, I found $9 million, and I wasn't looking hard. What did we do? We carved a million and a half, and we went and focused on arts and culture. Nothing wrong with that. Nothing wrong, but I'm seeing a lot of arts and culture within these non-MOUs. I mean, I went to Virginia Wesleyan. I don't know if they need $441,000. It's a great partnership. I don't think the university's struggling. Students on the swim with water everywhere. I've never met students on swim, but I mean, how many drownings are we having? Southeast 4-H, that's a big program for you, Barbara, in the agricultural south. I mean, $9,800, not a lot of money to go to 4-H, teach kids how to do agriculture. So I'm at the place where I don't know if I'm going to be able to support the budget. I'm really looking forward to reconciliation and see what we slide in, because last year a lot was slid in that we didn't discuss. Mr. Manager, my colleagues may be supportive of this budget, but $60 million? And all we asked for was a design? District Eight residents are not excited about another park at Rudy Loop. When we told Bruce Smith he couldn't even come and give us a presentation to assist, he wants to do a public-private. We wouldn't even let him in. He owns the property. So we're paying $40 million roughly of that $60 for a parking garage, if we're honest with the public. I mean, maybe $42, $44. And so I don't know how we got here, Mr. Mayor. I don't see this budget representing the priorities of the constituents. And so I'll go out on a limb and just say, "You know what? I don't think we were aggressive. I don't think we were bold. And for all the boaters in District Eight, and I was on the water last weekend, 25-year reprieve is quite a long time. And for those seniors out there, many of my colleagues think we're being very generous. We have a city of 450,000 people. 5,100 people is about 1% of our population. And when we were through Westminster, Canterbury, and that deal, we said there's a senior tsunami. I don't think it's started raining yet." Thank you, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you. And if I could do that, Mr. Taylor certainly respects your opinion. But once again, when we talk about... What we're confronting right here is what every municipality in this great nation is going through. They're bitten and smitten by inflationary cost, affordable housing. Everything we're talking about, we're wrestling. Every municipality is going through that. And, you know, the city's had its share of challenges, especially with COVID recovery. But, you know, I respectfully submit that when we were able to get the beaches open when nobody else was able to, we were able to sustain. And the next year thing... And believe me, you know, being a district guy for 14 years before becoming mayor, you know, I've always wanted to make sure that things, you know, were across the board. But once again, that we were able to bounce back from the COVID and have two very strong tourist seasons out at the oceanfront, which, if I recall, resulted in a $3-point-billion-dollar fiscal, positive fiscal impact that actually saved a lot. And from when I read a safe thing, and an average of $1,700 per household, you know... But once again, the budget times are always the most contentious time going. There's always different ways to do it. And, you know, once again, I'm going to use my lump of clay metaphor that, you know, budgets are a lump of clay. And it's such for us that we put out recommendations, and over time, we try to shape it into what it's supposed to be. And, you know, the point is, though, you know, we are considered... You know, we made it through the COVID probably better than any city I'm aware of, in spite of the challenges. And there's always going to be ways to look at things and things. But when you look at the budget, you look at the complexity, you know, we heard recently from other cities that, you know, arts and culture help bring people down here. And the thing is that, yes, our taxes go up. But I can also tell you that, you know, this is kind of a tale of two cities. The people that lived here for years see their taxes going up. But a lot of folks that move here from up north and other places see their taxes and car insurance go down. But once again, this is, you know, this is a challenge. We have 11 individuals at the table. But once again, I think we all just got to get our hands on that lump of clay. And, you know, we have this thing, the budget reconciliation, and just to make sure, we will make sure that everyone is engaged. But once again, the challenges that we are having are not unique to Virginia Beach. And the thing is, though, you know, but the other thing is, we got to look forward to the future, you know? And to do that, we're going to have to increase, you know, find new revenue sources to come in. And I concur that a lot of that has to be the commercial end of it. And, but once again, we're going to have a confrontation in the future. Barbara, and then Chris.
Well, I'm going to be a little more specific with some of the things that I wanted to make certain that we or would like for us to address, and I hope I can be reasonable with my request. I had talked before about my feeling that we really have to do something with some additional firefighters over and above the 17. I know the class that was just graduated has helped a lot, but I think we've got to do more. And I hope we can find some way to factor in what is needed. And I see people shaking their heads, so I won't do a lot of preaching, because I think you all have read the reports too. So I would really like to see us make sure we're going to be addressing this need of 60, if we can do it even in some incremental fashion. That would be good. But another thing that had come up, and, you know, since we're particularly talking about fire and EMS with our volunteer EMS, that perhaps we need to be helping fund some of their costs that, you know, they have had to pay for the ambulances and so forth. But I think somewhere in all of this that we've read, there was identified our need for eight additional ambulances. If we are going to be able to, or we should, or we take over this responsibility of, rather than just lending the money for ambulances and expecting them to pay us back, that we provide the ambulances, I think we need to look at that. And if we could start out with a couple of ambulances, because we certainly want to make sure we are providing what they need. And I think the very fact that we have volunteers who are willing to do it and we not having to pay the cost of employees, we certainly shouldn't necessarily require them to go out and fund what they have to do that too. So I was thinking, maybe if we could address this with the ambulances a little bit as a beginning, we could come up with a plan for that. It would be good. Another thing, and we talked about this a couple of months ago when we were talking about the VICTA study and the sports tourism, and particularly in the ITA, the interfacility traffic area, which has a wonderful plan that was developed by some very good consultants a few years ago, and we adopted it, and it's in the comprehensive plan, but it's just not implemented. And from what I am learning in talking about this, there's just this lack of a specific and detailed master plan is really a barrier to us being able to utilize that area, which is there for the asking, beginning with tree planting. And, you know, we have this big opportunity now with the money that we're getting from Virginia Power for tree planting. But where do we plant them? But we own, what is it, 3,000 acres that's owned by the city and the ITA, which has a lot of problems with the soil types and so forth. An ideal place for tree planting and also an ideal place for what the plan calls for, which is passive and active recreation, which fits perfectly with our economic development in sports tourism. We just have to get it done. And so in looking at this, I see that there is a bit of an obstacle in developing this plan because there are different departments involved. Of course, there's planning, there's parks and rec, there's economic development, and it seemed like there were four of them. But I think if we let it be known that this is something we would like to have worked on, and we don't need another consultant. We've got the consultant's plan. Our staff can do it. In talking with some of the folks, I can see that there might be an impediment in maybe needing an additional employee. I think I've heard the figure maybe $150,000 could make this happen. And our committees, the advisory committees, have really been looking at this and are very supportive, starting with, of course, the ITA committee, but also the Active Transportation Committee. We could easily do trails in that area. We could do a cross-country trail at a very low cost that could generate a lot of good money for us if we just go ahead and do it. And the Green Ribbon Committee and the Open Space Committee are very much on board for doing something. And I would suggest that since we're really looking at how to use this, particularly with tree planting, that that million dollars that we've gotten from Dominion Energy for tree mitigation could be a source for this $150,000, along with planting the trees, because we need to identify where to plant them and how to plant them. Of course, they don't all need to go with that area. But I'm just suggesting that as a funding source so that we won't get bogged down in how are we going to pay for this. But I think if council identifies in this budget that this is something we would like to accomplish this year, I think it would be... It's a golden opportunity, and the time is right. And I hope we can maybe do this very simply with our staff and the money that we've got. And the other issue that I do want to mention, and I know that I've been talking about Indian River Road for a good while, and we did put Indian River Road safety improvements in the budget. But I think we found out with what's been occurring that that's not quite going to do the job. So far, only $500,000 has been appropriated, although we do have an estimate here of $21 million, but there's no money in there. And I know this is not a road that's going to be able to be built easily. It's going to be at least 10 years, my estimation. By the time we get the design done, we get the permitting done, we do all that we would have to do in raising the funds for it and building. It's going to be a very difficult... But if we don't get started, we're never going to get there. I'm just thinking that maybe we could somehow find some design money to put in here to start the design of this road. I think we're going to learn a lot from the Punga Ferry Road project because they're very similar. We do have the Punga Ferry Road project in the bond referendum, and we did just get $19 million from the state. But I'm hoping that if we start with this project, we could find some state and federal money to help with Indian River Road as well, because it's really critical. But if we don't have it in our plan for design and so forth, we're not going to be able to go after those funds that we're going to need to be able to make this project happen. So I was hoping we could put a little something in this year's budget, at least to begin design, and to let it be known that this is a project that we're going to be working on and we can move forward, because it's a critical road, and it's dangerous as it is now, as we've found out. So those would be my issues that I hope we can find some way to address in the budget.
Yes, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brandon, just one clarity. So for the ITA, are you looking to get a master plan done as basically put some draft language in the reconciliation for a master plan for the ITA area based on what you talked about? The big concern I got from staff doing it is that staff is in the middle of the comprehensive plan right now. So it'll be hard for staff to pivot to it, because that's such a tremendous lift for them as well. That's probably one of the reasons why we would probably be open to a consultant. But if that's not the desire of council, and you would like for us to pivot towards using staff for it, could it be something that comes after the comprehensive plan, which is, we're projecting to bring that to council towards the end of the year for consideration?
I see the comprehensive plan as an opportunity to do this as well, because we've got all of these plans that are in existence that are added to our plan already. And so with the attention that the comprehensive plan is getting with this area, I think it's... They're going to be simultaneous, or able to do this fairly simultaneously so that after the plan is drafted, we could just look and see what do we have with our master plan here? Because, like I say, the ITA plan is already done. It's just a matter of looking at that land and saying what is not done that we need to do, and how can we achieve this? I just see so many opportunities, and I've always said, "Timing is everything, and now is the time." And I just hope we can bring it together. And I think it'll come with the comprehensive plan discussions as I'm hearing them.
Okay. Okay, Chris, and then Amelia, and then Josh.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And I'll conclude my comments with, I heard from two council members tonight about the need to be cognizant of renters. And I... And I I had a I took an Uber ride home the other day, and the gentleman that was driving was a soldier. And I know we've said we would first retreat lean on life experience, shared experiences, and many of you know I did work in the apartment industry. I wanted to share this with the public because it's not all bad. If you're in the military, and we love military in this city, in this region, Oceana, Mass Oceana, their BAH rates, base housing assistance, rates increased by eight point seven percent from two thousand twenty-three for soldiers to go rent or purchase a home. And for soldiers with dependents, children, that was they saw a twenty-two point four percent increase. And so I don't know, Mr. Manager, how we are going to separate the those individuals because not everyone that is renting is feeling the pain. And as I know touring an apartment complex, I won't mention the name, I I went and shopped the apartment complexes if I was going to rent, and a two-bedroom unit within District Eight on the cusp was twenty-four hundred dollars a month. If two soldiers that were E3s that were based at Oceana lived there, they would collect four thousand one hundred dollars collectively each, and they could split that rent. Individuals working at the oceanfront, working at Townsend, they don't necessarily have that privilege. I don't know if if you work at Cheesecake or if you work at an oceanfront resort, if you saw an eight point cent eight point seven percent increase in your salary or your wages. And I know the majority of people in District Eight aren't seeing a twenty-two point four percent increase in their in their income. And so I think we have to be cautious. Again, that's why I was hoping for a little bit more substantive discussion around these dedications. There are individuals that are actually prospering in our city because they have a they are in a position to where they can leverage supplemental income. And I think it's also important to note that I have not talked to one constituent or individual in this city that rents from a private commercial landlord that's rent has gone down. And I encourage you to comment on Facebook or send the council a message if your rents have gone down in the last year. And so I think we have to be cautious with the generalization because I don't know how, Mr. Manager, you're going to divide that that house. Thank you.
Okay, Amelia and then Josh.
Just wanted to again thank everyone for your support to do with that dedicated funding for the arts and humanities. I know my partner here in crime see the importance I do, and the ROI from the arts are very important. A lot of people haven't sat down to look at the amount of hours, the whole creativity, what they put in, and having that amount give them the opportunity. Because as we saw, they weren't able to even cover everything the last time. So this gives them a minute to, you know, review, prioritize, and open doors for others. The second I wanted to mention, as you know, we've assigned to a commission, which is the VA two hundred and fifty, and Councilman Remick and I are on that, and they do need some funding to carry out some of what they do. And even if we don't get up to how much, but we look at it, even in July, they're planning to come and kind of show us some of this history because a lot of things happened right along Virginia Beach, especially District One with that. So we're looking at sixty thousand dollars to complete all what they need and stay on par with the others. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there on behalf of the liaisons to see what we can gather to help them. And they they are very serious about the meetings. So that's one. And another group that came up to me, I don't know whether it's possible, as you can remember, they did a presentation to us, the Virginia Beach Sports, you know, Hall of Fame, and they are here, they don't have a regular beach facility. I think they, one in your building, right? Yes, with Will Driscoll, but they're planning to do even more educational opportunities for our youth and something to help supplement. So last time they didn't get anything. And prior to that, I asked, what did you ever get from the city? It was fifty thousand. So they're what you're looking at as your ceiling, which is a hundred and fifty thousand. If some way we could meet them halfway or even a hundred, or what one suggestion was given to me that may be in the sports and marketing, there may be an opportunity, you know, to look into that. I haven't talked to them yet, but I thought that was a good suggestion because going through the arts and humanities, it doesn't really relate, in a way, to what all the arts and humanities, they're mainly arts and culture. So those are, you know, three things I want to throw out there.
Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just I wanted to echo Councilwoman Henley's comments regarding the, you know, potential cross-country and expansion uses a little bit down in the pack. And I, too, have heard about the need for a little bit better interdepartmental coordination. I I would, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know, consultant or in-house or whatever it is makes no sense, whatever it is, just get it, you know, get it done. I I think that's that that seems like it's low-hanging fruit there, just because the the landscape is is what it is, and those passive recreational uses would would be too much of a lift. And if there are, you know, if there are funding sources that I know we talked a little bit, and I don't mean to talk out of turn by any means, but on that Southern Rivers Watershed side acquisition, CIP, I think can be, it's not not necessarily just for side acquisition, but could be used for passive recreation uses potentially, but things like that where you've got dollars in place, where it's not new money, would be good.
There's some complication with that. DEQ has reached out to us, and they're they're having a different interpretation on the use of the funds that are more constraining us towards acquisition than passive recreation. We're trying to get them to send us in writing what their expectations are with that as well. And once we get a better clarity from DEQ, we'll communicate that to City Council. But it looks like they're more on the lens of acquisition and not passive recreation use at this time.
Okay, well, I just I I wanted to I wanted to acknowledge, I wanted to acknowledge my support, you know, along those lines, and and also want to acknowledge Ms. Hicks and Mr. Kemp, our ITATA committee chair and our Active Transportation Committee Chair in the gallery. And and Councilwoman Ross Hammond mentioned the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. I've I've known I've known and met, you know, Will Driscoll, yeah, yeah. And and, you know, prior prior now, I think the the way that they receive funding was 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 kind of different than what they're encountering now in terms of in terms of how how they're going about, you know, requesting it. And honestly, I mean, you know, just not being on remembering what it was like not on the council, I mean, the budget can be kind of mystifying to to people who who aren't involved in the process. So I I think I think they were they were maybe just a little kind of taken aback and confused in terms of how to go about asking and and who to ask and where to ask and and all of that. So and and then I think, like you said, they just kind of got left out. So so I I just I I'm also supportive of that, and I just wanted to make that known.
Okay, work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I also want to give my support to this concept as well, and maybe there's something there for schools, maybe there's something for ecotourism or tourism, maybe something for agriculture. So I mean, three thousand acres is a lot, and maybe there's something there. I'd like to to maybe look into it, and I fear about the cost, but at the same time, we'll see what it is. But budget-related, I the only addition I'm going to ask for, and Vice Mayor Wilson knows this as well as the city manager, last Friday, I had a thorough meeting with the Sea-Tac Community League at the Sea-Tac Rec Center. I'm a lifetime member of that civic league, and I made that a part of my campaign two years ago to upgrade both Sea-Tac Park and Sea-Tac Rec Center. So we're going to continue those conversations with City Manager Duhany and Parks and Rec on enhancing, especially the Sea-Tac Park. But specifically, a third ask is to upgrade the signs into Sea-Tac Community to a brick sign that Councilwoman Ross Hammond programmed that she has. So I'm going to put into the reconciliation request for two signs for Sea-Tac with Sea-Tac Community as a part of reconciliation.
Anyone else with this one?
I just have a question, sir. So, Patrick, when so right now, what we're doing, because this is my first round on this, is is that we next meeting, we will still have more discussion about where we're headed with the budget, correct?
So and again, now we're in the part of the process that is the council process of taking the adopted bud budget and modifying it to make it council's budget, right? So this is purely the city council process, right? So right now, what's going on is I've had several conversations with some of you all, some of you all have sent me emails, and some of you all have spoken to the vice. We're communicating information on what's on the list. The Vice Mayor is going to get a copy of that, and then she's probably going to communicate the council and figure out how best for by the reconcile the adopted budget to get to a place where over a majority of you all will support or an adoption. I think the intent, and I don't want to get in front of the mayor and vice mayor, I think the intent of the mayor and vice mayor is next week on the seventh, it's scheduled to be a budget reconciliation meeting, so that's probably when the draft reconciliation letter will be socialized amongst council. Council may have conversations on it, and then the next week is when council has to vote on it. Mayor Vice Mayor is there.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much.
If I can say something, I try to reach out to everybody, and I've got my notebook that he was sending tomorrow, getting together with Patrick and Kevin, because we're going to figure out how to fund things. And there's a lot of work that has to come between now and next Tuesday with how we're going to pay for things. And and we're not going to be able to pay for everything. I mean, there's limited amount of funds, and and there's a huge amount of work that has to go into pairing all of the ordinances. Because you add things, you've got to have, it's got to balance, you know? The spend the expenditures have got to match the revenues. So it's it's a lot of work that Kevin and his group are going to have to do. So next Tuesday, we have what we call a reconciliation letter that we will present from listening to everyone and finding out what what's possible to be funded. Everybody's voice is really important, but just be prepared. It is it is a tight year. I don't think we're going to do everything that everybody's asked for, but we're we're going to do our best. And again, it's it's collective. We're not going to agree with everything, but hopefully we can we can do our best. It's just you're not going to believe agree with everything that's in the budget, but hopefully there's enough in there that everybody will think this is a good budget. And I I think we've started out with a good budget and try to get from here till next next Tuesday is going to be a very important day because, see, the public needs to hear that. They need to hear what's going to be in the reconciliation, and then we vote on it the following week. Is that fair, Patrick?
Yes, Councilman Vice Mayor, that's correct. Sir, Chris. Mayor Dyer, I this is, again, it's not news because I presume this was taking place, but I've had one phone call from the Vice Mayor. She didn't ask me what I would like to do in reconciliation, and so to hear these that there's a list, so I'll go ahead and throw out my list now. I don't I think because I communicated to her that I was probably not going to support the budget, and there's a very popular consultant that says if you don't support the budget, you shouldn't get anything in it, but he's not on city council. We have Great Neck Football League, so if you want to take this note, Madam Vice Mayor, who came to us last year and didn't get what they asked, but they got twenty-five. I've talked to so many families, we talk about this two percent reduction, it's not going to do much, inflation. There are thousands of families in Virginia Beach that that really depend on our youth sports programs, recreation, Parks and Rec, whether that be Kings Grant, Kempsville, and these sports leagues, and speaking to some of their boards, they cannot afford to provide scholarships to all of these families, some of them single-family, single-parent homes. And so because we didn't have a really thorough strategic discussion about dedications, if you could write for District Eight, seventy-five thousand to Great Neck Football League, and then twenty-five thousand to every other youth sports league that is affiliated with Parks and Rec, and here's the funding source, the dedicated funding source. We can you can take it from tip, you can take it from the the list that I provided to at the retreat, it is archived and recorded, because in our conversation, I was not asked what I thought or what I wanted to contribute to the reconciliation list. So if you could note those, and then, Mr. Manager, we don't have to, for the public, we don't have to spend any new money. We've already identified millions of dollars. We're going to take one and a half million and cut that out for arts and culture. And we heard that children are the most important. We know the the power of youth sports, whether it be Mark Reynolds, UVA to the major leagues, whether it be Councilwoman Rouse's husband, who I played high school basketball with, who grew up playing at Cook Recreation, whether that be Chris Taylor, the Dodgers player that grew up playing in Great Neck Football, baseball. Sports is an integral part of our culture here, and unfortunately, many of these leagues are reeling with lower participation. And to add to it, we we built a sports complex that is actually competing with many of the sports leagues. So to be specific, seventy-five to Great Neck Football League, and then I believe we've already identified the recreation leagues that are partnered with Parks and Rec. When we had the presentation, it was no it was no more than forty, twenty-five thousand per, and no new revenue, no new spending. We can just cut it off of those dedicated funding sources, so I hope to see that in reconciliation matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry about this, but so we're running out of time, I recognize that, but as kind of what Councilman Taylor said and several others have kind of talked about, just real quick, and I know Ms. Henley spoke to it a little bit, but like when we talk about the firefighters that we're trying to get, I think we either need to add some time next Tuesday and before we start to talk about it, because I think we're going to run out of time right now, but I just want to make sure that.
So just to clarify, so council will have the whole bunch, the whole meeting on Tuesday to go over the reconciliation budget. But I think.
I just don't want to miss out because of procedural, that's all I'm saying.
I've heard it previously from council, and it seems like when that conversation came up, majority of you all indicated that you all wanted us to come up with a plan. And again, we'll bring something forward for council to consider because it's you all making this decision.
I trust you.
We'll come up with a plan on how to get to an increase of maybe thirty firefighters this year, with then the understanding that the language may be that, consider it in the next budget for getting the rest of it.
Right.
Right? The big thing we have with this one is that that's an ongoing cost, right? One-off things usually are a little better because we got a healthy fund balance, you can pull a little bit from the fund balance, but ongoing costs are the ones that take a lot of navigating. So Kevin and his team are trying to identify a source for that, but we heard you pretty loud and clear that you all want us to come for come forward with a proposal that you all could consider to getting to probably at least half of what the fire department requested, with the understanding that we would consider the rest of it as rest of the next budget process. It may take a hybrid approach, it may be that they get the seventeen that we proposed in in July, and then maybe they get the rest in January. A lot of it depends on what council's asking for reconciliation. As the Vice Mayor says, expenditures need to match revenues.
Right. So just know I will be looking for more number.
And Hutch, I think, you know, we have the way I read the landscape, you know, this is the highest priority. Okay, okay, folks, you know, yeah, you know, just one thing, about fifteen years ago, we I was part of a governor's appointment to the Mandate Review Task Force, and I believe that the results of that, that about twenty-two cents of the budget are unfunded mandates are on us. Could we get an actual account one day after the budget's done on how how much unfunded mandates cost us? Okay? And the other thing is, I just want to thank everybody, you know, this has been a very, very, you know, tough process, but let's remember, you know, we're a great city, you know, we got a lot going for us. The people that live here, work here, have their businesses here, a lot of people love living here. But once again, you know, it's important for us as a council going forward to confront the challenges and just keep the quality of life that everybody, you know, deserves. And that being said, let's go ahead and recess, and I'll see you in a bit.
Good evening and welcome. I read the order for the special session earlier, so therefore, we're going to be getting to go. And thank you all for coming here. And just a reminder, each one of you will have three minutes to speak. And welcome. And at this point, the resolution ordinance for collective bargaining requested by city council is either to authorize collective bargaining or decline to authorize collective bargaining and added division four to City Code two, Article three, to create employee committees to enhance communication among city council, city manager, and employees in the city regarding the terms of conditions and appointment. Could we call the first speaker?
The first speaker is Teresa Stanley. After Ms. Stanley is Kay Flora.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Teresa Stanley. I live at 143 Castilian Drive, and I am representing the Interfaith Alliance at the Beach in expressing our support for Virginia Beach city employees who seek a resolution for city council in support of collective bargaining and not a meet and confer alternative that would undermine the more democratic trust-building process necessary to move our city forward. City council and city management will continue to have the final say and flexibility when needed on all budget decisions, but supporting collective bargaining provides a crucial step in giving our workers a process where there is true accountability and respect. Studies have shown that workplaces with collective bargaining agreements have lower turnover rates, higher employment engagement, as well as increased safety and efficiency rates. Employee retention savings alone of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year make this a good economic deal for the city. It is a moral imperative that we protect our workers to include addressing the issues of safety, dignity, living wages, and an end to institutional racism in the workforce. The sin of systemic racism has resulted in a disproportionate number of the lowest-paid workers in essential public service employment being people of color and women. Collective bargaining helps to close these gaps by promoting equal pay for equal work, increasing job satisfaction, and allowing workers to give direct input to protect health and safety concerns in the workplace. It has been more than a three-year journey since we took up this issue of collective bargaining in our city. It is past time to do what is right for the workers of Virginia Beach. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a champion of worker rights, including the right to collectively bargain, and was in Memphis, Tennessee, supporting sanitation workers when he was assassinated on April 4th in 1968. More than half a century later, King's famous quote still resonates in our hearts: "The time is always right to do what is right." Please know that all of us standing support you and our workers, and we want you to know that we really will support you for doing the right thing tonight in voting yes for the collective bargaining resolution this evening. Thank you so very much.
The next speaker is Kay Flora, and then Scott Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and city council. Good evening. My name is Kay Flora. I live at 1286 Brigantine Court in Virginia Beach. I am representing the Tidewater Source of Justice to express our support for Virginia Beach city employees to seek an authorizing ordinance by city council in support of collective bargaining. Virginia General Assembly approved legislation in March 2020 repealing Virginia's prohibition of public-sector collective bargaining. This legislation allows local governments to bargain collectively with their employees who can organize and bargain binding contracts that improve city policy, help retain staff, and continue to deliver high-quality services for the residents in our city. A review of research on the cost of employee turnover found that it costs employers 20% of an employee's annual salary to replace them. These costs include direct costs such as overtime, temporary staffing to cover the open position, and costs associated with advertising the open position, interviewing and screening of applicants to fill the position, and training for the new employee. Collective bargaining helps to close the wage gaps faced by women and people of color by promoting equal pay for equal work while increasing job and workplace satisfaction. Unions reduce inequality, promote social mobility, and advocate for better public services. Collective bargaining allows workers on the front line to give direct input to shape new policies to help protect their health and safety. The no-strike clause makes sure that city council and city management have the final say on all budget decisions, but supporting a collective bargaining process is a crucial step in giving city workers a seat at the table so that their voices are truly heard and respected. In a recent study by the Commonwealth Institute, it was determined that nine in 10 Virginia Beach city workers could not attain standard of living on what they are paid if they have even one child. We stand in solidarity with those who desire to work collaboratively and collectively to help dismantle oppressive economic practices. We know that we can count on you as entrusted leaders for the economic and common good of Virginia Beach to keep your promise to do what is right and support collective bargaining. Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Miller. After Mr. Miller is John Moss.
Welcome.
Good evening. You know me from my day job, but in the early mornings and evenings, I'm the president and chair of the Board of Virginia Beach Vision, a business advocacy collaborative guided by a board of 130 distinguished business leaders. We're committed to fostering a vibrant economic and community environment in Virginia Beach. Today, I speak from a unique intersection, an academic leading a large collaborative of Virginia Beach business executives. My role as a college president involves navigating diverse stakeholder groups towards consensus, a skill that's particularly relevant today as we discuss the topic of collective bargaining for city employees. Virginia Beach Vision has thoroughly evaluated this issue, engaging with various community and business leaders, including representatives from the firefighters' union. Our stance is clear: We oppose the implementation of collective bargaining for city employees. This position is grounded not in opposition to employee rights, but in a pragmatic assessment of the potential impacts on our municipal operations and fiscal health. Firstly, while we fully support firefighters' call for enhanced safety measures such as cancer screenings, we believe these can be provided more effectively through administrative actions rather than through collective bargaining. The city council has the power to prioritize these health initiatives directly, ensuring our brave firefighters receive the protections they deserve without the complexities and delays of bargaining process. Moreover, collective bargaining could complicate our workforce management and inflate the cost of government services. It risks creating disparate benefit packages among employee groups, leading to division rather than unity within our workforce. While current state laws prohibit strikes and mandatory union membership, these protections could be overturned quickly by a change in Richmond, further complicating our labor environment. From a logistical perspective, our city's payroll systems are not currently equipped to handle the variances that multiple bargaining units would necessitate. Adapting these systems would be costly and time-consuming, estimated to take 12 to 18 months for full implementation. Additionally, we would see ongoing costs related to managing the bargaining process, including new staffing needs and increased legal fees for arbitration. While we recognize the intentions behind the push for collective bargaining, we believe that our city can achieve better outcomes through direct administrative action and enhanced communication. Strong leadership and collaboration, attributes that define our current municipal management, provide the best path for addressing employee concerns and advancing the interests of our community. Once again, our board, the Board of Virginia Beach Vision, consisting of 130 distinguished business leaders, opposes the implementation of the collective bargaining for city employees. I thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
The next speaker is John Moss.
Please, folks, let's be respectful.
After Mr. Moss is Kathleen Slindy.
Welcome, Mr. Moss.
Well, good evening, Mayor Dyer, honorable members of city council, my good friend, Mr. Duhany, and my long-term confidant advisor, the city attorney, Mr. Stiles. I'm only here because I was personally invited, along with every member of the Republican City Committee, was solicited to come down here by the mayor when he spoke at our meeting in April, so I'm down here on behalf of his position. Rarely do we agree on many things, but on this we do, so I'll focus on what we agree on. I would certainly ditto the remarks by Vision. You can record that down. That's probably a unique event and time, so something might be happening on a stellar basis. But this is not in the best interest of the public. I think all of you know that if the public was out there and had, could choose, and could vote, this would not pass. It would not pass. Your job is to represent the public after you get in office and not to represent the special interest who helped get you here. This is a big change, a change that the public does not support, and I think you know that. You know what the right thing to do. I ask you to do the right thing, but if you're doing this, I want collective bargaining for taxpayers, so we can have a contract too, because then we know we can constrain the money you have available to pay off special interest. We need to serve the public interest. You need to decline unionization contracts for the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, and then Stephen Johnston.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, city council. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Slindy. I'm president of the Virginia Beach Education Association, whose members are spread through every employment category in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I'm a professional teacher with over 25 years of classroom experience, and I'm here to speak in support of the resolution. The decision to allow collective bargaining for all Virginia Beach city employees, which includes public school employees, means a seat at the table with our employers during the formation and ratification of employee contracts. Here are some reminders about the positive impacts this has on this community. Collective bargaining gives workers a voice in the decisions that are made about them. Contract negotiations by city employees like firefighters, EMS, police, educators, and all the other workers who keep our city running smoothly and safely are important because these groups are simultaneously bargaining for the common good of the community. For example, when employers negotiate for working conditions that are safe and healthy for themselves, they are also advocating for safe and healthy living and working conditions for all citizens, our neighbors and families, our fellow employees, and for those who have come to vacation here as well. A safe and healthy work environment reduces stress and increases morale, which reduces illnesses and absenteeism for all workers. This means workers are present every day, devote more time and energy to doing their jobs well. Improved working and living environments for citizens equals a better vacation place for our visitors and a more desirable location for potential businesses. For city employees, this means they are more likely to stay and work in Virginia Beach rather than leave for other localities, increasing our retention rate and lowering costs related to recruiting and hiring. Entering into negotiations with employees under collective bargaining agreements gives credibility to their employer. This process guarantees that workers' concerns and issues will be heard in discussions about possible solutions will take place directly with decision-makers. Other alternatives, such as meet and confer, do not accomplish this. In meet and confer, there is someone between the ones who make decisions about concerns and those advocating for possible changes. Our city manager said that when he meets with the employee groups who bring concerns under the current similar system, he makes the final decision about what he carries forth to our elected officials. Collective bargaining is a standard labor practice in many cities across the United States. The fact that Virginia has not engaged in this practice for over 40 years makes us late coming to the table. If Virginia Beach decides not to move forward with this, then our community will lag behind as other cities in our state offer better opportunities for employees. Thank you to those of you who vote yes to support collective bargaining for advocating for our city employees and working to move our city forward to be more competitive as a community in attracting and retaining the best talent for our growing needs. Thank you.
The next speaker is Stephen Johnston. After Mr. Johnston is Diana Howard.
Welcome.
Welcome. It's nice to be here. Welcome. Thank you very much, city council. In 1977, the United States Supreme Court ruled non-union workers that benefit from union negotiations, such as collective bargaining, need to pay the union a fee to the union for, to compensate them for all the work that they've done. Then in 2018, the Janus decision, the Supreme Court ruled workers could not be forced to pay fees to the unions. However, they left, they also left in place the requirement that unions need to represent all employees, not just the union workers. This forces the unions to provide free services to non-union workers. This is currently being challenged in a separate case in the federal court system, and if the Janus decision is overturned, non-union workers will be forced once again to pay fees to the unions. I encourage you to reject collective bargaining and to adopt the second option of the review panel, because no one should be forced to pay a union so that they can work in the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
The next speaker is Diana Howard. After Ms. Howard is Gretchen Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Diana Howard. I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and we oppose collective bargaining. In 1993, Governor Wilder made collective bargaining illegal for public employees. The vote passed on a nonpartisan support in both the state House and Senate. That law was overturned by Governor Northam on a party-line vote. It provides no framework or guidelines to implement it, leaving it up to the localities. All local unions are backed by national unions who have been preparing for this for years. They have decades of experience. The city does not. Collective bargaining with public employees would mean taking some of the decision-making authority over government functions away from elected representatives and transferring to union officials with whom the public has vested no such authority. Unions work every day to gain power, to exert control over the very governments that employ their members. They will insist that management needs to consult them before implementing rules of any kind. Loudoun County just passed their first union contract, making the union president a full-time position on city payroll, so he will be working on the taxpayers' dime for the union, not the taxpayer. Fairfax County Public Schools paid $5.8 million in 2016 for organizational leave for union teachers to officially attend union conferences. You are not taking into account the cost for doing this, not just in employees, but the cost of lawsuits, injunctions, grievances, charges, labor disputes, disagreement on contract languages. Every dollar spent on administering collective bargaining is a dollar net not spent on the issues that we care about, like affordable housing, fixing roads, flooding. Union collective bargaining is costly and unnecessary, costing taxpayers millions of dollars, forcing city workers to accept union boss representation that may not benefit them. Union bargaining increases the cost to taxpayers while hurting the quality of service. I urge you to oppose any attempt to impose union monopoly bargaining on city workers and taxpayers. What problem are you solving with collective bargaining that the city council and the city manager cannot solve without it? If there are workplace conditions that need to be adjudicated, don't make the taxpayer responsible for the contract negotiation by unions. You have the option to just say no to collective bargaining and instead require the city manager to meet with employees on a regular basis to address their issues, something that you have done in the past with pay compression, with raises and bonuses, and absorbing their cost of healthcare for six years.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just say no.
The next speaker is Gretchen Hill. After Ms. Hill is Patricia Thebert.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will keep it brief. As you all have heard from us ad nauseam, I'm with the Hampshire House Chamber, and we oppose the collective bargaining, and not just for the political reasons that might be out there, but for the impact that it will eventually have on your budget, particularly in a year when you are getting ready to reduce real estate taxes potentially by two cents. You all have been very aggressive about reducing them in the past, and I know that's good for your residents, but you don't deal with a large margin of money to play with in your budget to begin with, and you're already struggling to meet the needs and the requests that are out there. So we strongly oppose this, and I have some members in the audience that I think are also signed up later to reiterate some of those comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Thebert, and then Jimmy Frost.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I'm Patricia Thebert. I'm the vice president of the local UE 111. I'm also working in the Human Services Department for 15 and a half years. I understand that there's worry about the money, but we've got the money. You should be investing in your workers. Get the workers what they need. Meet and confer isn't going to work. We've been doing that. Clearly, we would like collective bargaining. We want that. There's a reason for that, because having meetings isn't working for us. You're not, you know, we can go in and we could talk to y'all, and y'all do listen, but nothing changes. So we need to have collective bargaining to get the changes that we need. We're not looking to get rich here in the city, and the most city employees really truly do like working in the city. So it's not about, you know, a bunch of disgruntled workers. It's about giving the city workers what they need. City workers can't afford to live in the city. There's a lot of safety issues out there that we need addressed. We need better equipment. You know, I know in human services, we need better vans. Our vans are breaking down every other week, it seems. So we have to have this so that we can get those things and keep our individuals that we serve in human services safe. The fire department, I'm sure, needs new trucks, and they are serving the public. Then you've got city work, the city workers that are doing public works and public utilities. If they don't work, the fire department can't work. The police can't do it. So we have to have collective bargaining to ensure that the city keeps on moving smoothly. You are only as strong as your weakest link. Right now, your city workers are your weakest link. We need to get the strength back up. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jimmy Frost. After Mr. Frost is Cody Connor.
Good evening, Jimmy.
I sent you an email outlining my opposition to collective bargaining, so instead, I'll direct my comments to those city employees demanding collective bargaining. I would simply ask them to think back to the exciting day they'd gotten a job with the city. Were you happy that you'd been chosen from all the other applicants? Did you feel fortunate that you landed a job that provides steady pay, benefits, and security many in the private sector do not have? How long did that feeling of elation last? So what happened? Many come before council and complain about pay, benefits, or how the city doesn't care or listen to them. Newsflash: Our parents were right. Being an adult isn't always fun, and almost every employee that's ever walked planet Earth feels underpaid and ignored. Let me ask you this: How many city employees here tonight went without pay or benefits during the COVID lockdowns? We all know someone who lost income and jobs because of COVID, and I don't think any of our city employees did. And you're complaining why? Here's the funny part: Most of the taxpayers I know, fiscal hawks all, were perfectly okay with that, and yet you feel so unappreciated? Seriously? A pack of blessings lights upon thy back; happiness courts thee in her best array. In 2023, Teamsters President O'Brien said, "No job is better than a so-so job." And because of that attitude and refusing to negotiate, 22,000 Teamsters became unemployed when yellow motor freight collapsed. "No job is better than a so-so job," said no husband to his wife, ever, without the cops showing up, anyway. I wonder if those 22,000 Teamsters still agree with Mr. O'Brien when, facing an uncertain future, they picked up their last paycheck. An October 23 marketplace broadcast reported many former yellow freight drivers are still unemployed while Mr. O'Brien lost neither sleep nor his $250,000 annual salary. Think a union will always have your back? Ask those yellow freight drivers what they think. This is Pandora's box. If this council votes for collective bargaining, you'll bind yourselves, future councils, and Virginia Beach citizens to dealing with a parallel management entity we didn't elect, you didn't appoint, and doesn't have the best interests of Virginia Beach taxpayers or the government we elected in mind. This synopsis is the antithesis of what good government should be. It's also what each of you swore an oath to defend against. If you cast a ballot for collective bargaining, you're voting against the citizens and surrendering government sovereignty that we, the people, gave you. All I ask is this: Remember who you were elected by and who you swore to serve. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cody Connor. After Mr. Connor is Andy Bond.
Good evening.
Good evening. From what I understand, you've already heard about him tonight, but since he's one of my biggest heroes and one of the greatest inspirations of my lifetime, I'm going to talk to you more about Mr. Doctor, sorry, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I admire him not just because of what he stood for, but because of how he stood for it. Nobody could say that he was on the wrong side of history. Now, I know that everybody remembers that he said, "I have a dream," but too few remember that he also said, "The labor movement was the principal force that transformed misery and despair into hope and progress." He was passionate about collective bargaining and spoke in support of it many times all over the country. While many remember that Dr. King was assassinated in Memphis on April 4th, 1968, few recall that the reason he was in Memphis was to support collective bargaining. Few remember that the last speech he delivered in his life was to a group of striking sanitary workers in support of collective bargaining. Martin Luther King also strongly believed in integrity. He once said, "May I stress the need for courageous, intelligent, and dedicated leadership, leaders of sound integrity? I exhort you now as leaders to act with sound integrity." Don't vote against collective bargaining, claiming that we can't afford it, and then vote in favor of losing money on a festival or decreasing the city's revenue by lowering real estate taxes. Don't vote against supporting sanitation workers and say a clean city is a priority. Don't vote against what is best for teachers and say you want the best education for our children. Don't vote against police and firefighters having a voice and say public safety is at the top of your list. Don't claim to have integrity and then get caught talking out of both sides of your mouth. I will leave you, city council, and the workers here standing up for their right to a voice with these words, delivered from Dr. King to a group of striking sanitation workers the night before he died. Let us rise up tonight with greater readiness. Let... Let us stand with a greater determination, and let us move on in these powerful days, these days of challenge to make America what it ought to be.
The next speaker is Andy Bond, and then Perez Gatling. Is Andy here? Andy Bond. Perez Gatling. After Mr. Gatling is Mike Bisck.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council. My name is Perez Gatling, and I am the pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church in Virginia Beach. And I'm also the president of the Virginia Beach Interdenominational Ministers Conference. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to advocate for the rights and the welfare of our city employees through the establishment of collective bargaining rights. These dedicated workers are our neighbors, our friends, our family members, and they serve the community with dedication, ensuring that our city functions smoothly and effectively. They deserve not only our gratitude, but also the assurance that their voices will be heard and their concerns addressed. Collective bargaining provides a formal and equitable platform for city employees to negotiate salaries and benefits. This evening, members of council, you have an opportunity to be great. You have an opportunity to be on the precipice of policymaking. You have the opportunity to improve the lives of these hardworking men and women and their families for generations to come. You have an opportunity to be courageous. Maya Angelou said, I think a hero wrote, I think a hero is any person really intent on making this a better place for all people. And Jesus said, "Whatever you do and whatever you have done unto the least of these, you have done unto Me." I pray that you will be courageous this evening. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Mike Bisck, and then Ellen Jaffey-Gill.
Hello. I don't have much to say, but I am on unpaid leave right now because the only thing protecting me from unemployment is a collective bargaining contract agreement. And that it's not possible with the bosses just saying that there's promises. It's all about the contract. Where's the contract? Where's the contract for these workers? And that's the problem. Because if I weren't in -- if I didn't have this opportunity to have my job saved, I would be -- I would be going to the Human Services Building and being told that there's no -- that nothing they can do to help me because there's not enough resources. So, whatever bargaining is happening now is not working. I think we need collective bargaining, and I honestly don't know what to say because this is -- it's ridiculous that it hasn't happened yet. Collective bargaining? There's already bargaining going on. We just don't see it happening. So, I think we all know what we're talking about.
The next speaker is Ellen Jaffey-Gill, and then Amaziah Cummings.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rabbi Ellen Jaffey-Gill. I live at 4661 Priscilla Lane in Virginia Beach, and I represent both clergy, who have a well-developed sense of what is right and wrong, and I also am an ex-teacher who was unionized and was happy to be so. And I am here tonight to speak in favor of collective bargaining. I didn't know what to say because I was here a few weeks ago to speak in favor of collective bargaining, and I didn't want to repeat the same things I had said, but luckily, in this morning's paper, Diana Howard was quoted as saying, "What problem is collective bargaining going to solve that the city council and the city manager can't solve without it?" And she repeated that question a few minutes ago. I'm very glad that Ms. Howard phrased her statement in the form of a question because it's a very easy question to answer. What problem is collective bargaining going to solve that the city council and the city manager can't solve without it? Well, for one thing, it will -- collective bargaining will be -- will ensure that workers' voices are heard, and not just those of the city council and the city manager. It will -- that's the short answer. The long answer is too long for me to present in three minutes, but three-fourths of the people in this room know the answer to that question. It's not a question of money. If it were a question of money, it would -- there would be no -- there would be no resolution because workers would recognize that collective bargaining would bankrupt the city. But we know from studies that the diminution in turnover will more than pay for the extra expenses of unionizing the city. And we know that meet and confer is not a solution to this problem because my colleagues are not children. They do not need permission to come before the council, hat in hand, to ask for their rights. I will end with this: It has been said that the council is perfectly capable of putting in place of safety measures and work conditions. Why hasn't it yet? Thank you.
The next speaker is Amaziah Cummings, and then Konrad Schisventer.
Good evening, sir.
When first taken on any great or important organ-taking, you must first invoke the aid of deity. I'm not sure if you've done that yet today, but I'm praying for you right now, and I'm praying for the members of this audience, for you, City Council, to do the right thing, which is vote yes on collective bargaining. Now, this gentleman came up, and I guess he's a scholar, professional. Did he leave? Wow. I just wanted to know. We've got a lot of professionals in here right now. Professionals that work every day, hard every day, for you, citizens of Virginia Beach. Yes, I was happy when I got the job, and I'm still happy right now because that's the spirit I have right now. I'm going to do my job. I'm going to do my job. Now, I had a prayer or a speech, but sometimes, Pastor, your spirit takes you in a different These are some professionals out here. They do the job every day, every day. Firefighters! Sergeant Arms protecting me right now. I don't know what your status is, but I love you right now. This building is full of security. I would love to have that back over in Dam Neck. We need protection over there, too. We're people. We're human people. We're human. I want to be protected. I'm a still soldier. I got my right side patch on there, City Manager. You know what that's all about. Dispatch right here. You need to pass this resolution. A leader takes care of his or her people. When are we going to do that? When are we going to do that? Sir, I'm glad you came back in because I'm happy. I'm happy I got my job. I'm very happy. And I'm glad that your talent is not going to back up tomorrow because somebody's going to come over there, take care of it. Your water's flowing. Somebody's going to take care of it. You got a fire? He, she, going to be right there. Somebody's knocking at your window, Sergeant Arms, and his buddy's going to be right there. Going to be right there. Thank you, fire. Thank you for peace. Thank you, public utilities.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
The next speaker is Konrad Schisventer. After Mr. Schisventer is Steve Cover.
Good evening, Konrad.
Our Constitution's First Amendment is clear: Congress shall make no law abridging the right of the people to peacefully assemble. The Supremacy Clause assures the state of Virginia nor the city of Virginia Beach is empowered to abridge the right of the people to peacefully assemble. Assembly is an essential individual right to jointly work with others, to collectively promote ideas. And Roberts versus United States, J.C., the Supreme Court affirmed an implicit right to association with others in pursuit of shared social and political interests, and it exists when performing the right of assembly and the right of speech. Ladies and gentlemen, Virginia Beach City employees have a fully enumerated and fully guaranteed right to assemble with other city employees. By extension, they have the right to collectively bargain for a better workplace. Virginia Beach City Council supports the Constitution, right? You said you did when you virtue signaled a constitutional city in 2019. So, naturally, I'll assume this constitutional city will support Virginia Beach City employee collective bargaining by at least six to five, similar to your 2019 vote. However, 2024 is a municipal election year, so it's important to remind those on the ballot the significance of their vote tonight. Councilwoman Wilson enjoyed the support and endorsement of Virginia Beach professional firefighters, Virginia Beach Police Associations, and the Virginia Beach Education Association. And stand against them tonight, they'll remember in November. Councilwoman Wooten enjoyed its support and endorsements from Virginia Beach professional firefighters and Virginia Beach educators. Remove your support from them tonight, they'll remember in November. Councilman Berluci enjoyed its support and endorsements from Virginia Beach firefighters, Virginia Beach Police Associations, and the Virginia Beach Education Association. Spurn them tonight, and they'll remember in November. Councilman Hutchison received a promising show of support after his January victory when the Virginia Beach Education Association lauded your victory and publicly hoped you helped put in collective bargaining. If you vote against their wish, they'll remember in November. Mayor Dyer enjoyed its support and endorsements from Virginia Beach Police Associations and Virginia Beach firefighters before his victory in 2020. If you turn your back on the police and firefighters tonight, they'll remember that three other solid council challengers are on the ballot in November, two of which might vote yes tonight. The vote is important, mostly for 7,500 Virginia Beach City employees and 9,500 Virginia Beach school employees, but it's also important for 11 city council employees, six of whom are on the ballot this November, all facing 17,000 people either happy or unhappy on your decision regarding their constitutional right to collectively bargain. So, choose carefully.
The next speaker is Steve Cover. After Mr. Cover is Brian Luciano.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to come out. My name is Steve Cover. For those of you that may not know me, I'm one of the previous fire chiefs here. I'm a little bit older than the immediate past fire chief, and I was your deputy city manager of public safety for four years prior to my retirement. I was also a member of your collective bargaining task force that you appointed to look into the issues surrounding collective bargaining. We met, I was one of 11 members of that group, a very esteemed group from across -- good cross-section of our community, appointed by you. We met from late September through mid-November, and we submitted our recommendations to you all in December of '23. I just wanted to take a couple seconds, a couple minutes here tonight to discuss a couple of those recommendations that I think are important to your discussions here this evening. First thing we voted on, by a vote of nine to two, was that there would be no more than five bargaining units for a host of reasons, to hopefully consolidate and get the right people in the right group. Also, on the scope of collective bargaining, we spent a lot of time discussing the scope. What is the scope of collective bargaining? What should that look like? I think three topics that are relevant to this discussion here tonight include wages and benefits. That was an 11 to zero vote by your task force. Grievances, another unanimous vote. And working conditions, that was an eight to three vote. There's a lot of minutia with working conditions, and there was a lot of good discussion around that subject, but it still was a majority for the task force. So, these recommendations are your task force, and they were voted on, and they were recorded, and I believe you guys and ladies have had a brief on that previously. So, in closing, I think collective bargaining will go a long way in recruiting, hiring, training, and retaining quality employees for our city. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Brian Luciano, and then Bob Pizzini.
Welcome, Lucky.
Thank you. Following Mr. Cover is like coming onstage after Sinatra, so. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Mr. Dehaney. Thank you for once again allowing me to address you. As you know, I have the honor and responsibility of representing approximately 550 officers, detectives, and forensic professionals of the Virginia Beach Police Department. Honestly, there's not much left for me to say. We've talked about this issue extensively for the last several years. You know where I stand. I believe at this point, you're listening more out of obligation than the need for information. Everything that has been said has been said, and it's been said right up to the moment that I stepped up here. You've heard from experts. You've heard from laypeople. You've heard from employees, and you've heard from academics, academics who ironically are likely to have tenure and then warn you about the dangers of collective bargaining. One of the things that's frequently asked, and was asked only moments ago, is what are the problems that collective bargaining would be solving that council already cannot solve? This question assumes that it's all about wages, and I assure you, it is not all about wages. Council has no say over the selection of the equipment we use to help save our lives as police officers, and no authority to make sure that substandard equipment is removed. Trust me, many of you know that I've tried to get that point across before with no solution. Collective bargaining has been painted as a bunch of union bosses meeting in smoke-filled rooms, making deals under the cover of darkness, but that is not accurate. This process would be more transparent, much more transparent than the current process. Currently, I have dozens of police department contracts in our association offices, from Baton Rouge, Louisiana, to Vero Beach, Florida, to Defiance, Ohio, and yes, even Queen City Lodge Number 69 in Cincinnati, Ohio. By the way, it expired on Sunday, so if they need somebody to renegotiate for them, I'm open to travel. These contracts serve as a public record and are attainable by any citizen and taxpayer from each city's website and from the websites of the associations. This makes it much easier for the taxpayer to hold people accountable on both sides of the table during negotiations. I ask that you vote yes on collective bargaining today because it is much more than wages. While I'm up here -- While I'm up here before you, I'd like to use my last few moments to offer my condolences to the officers that were killed a mere 300 miles from here in Charlotte, North Carolina.
The next speaker is Bob Pizzini, and then Brian Graebley.
All right. Good evening, members of council, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Pizzini. I own and operate I Fly Virginia Beach, a business that will be directly impacted by collective bargaining. Prior to that, I served in U.S. Navy Special Operations for 26 years. I swore an oath. I know what that means. I know what it means to protect and to serve. I've been the incident commander, working with the Joint Counterterrorism Task Force during IED events, and I've worked with municipal fire departments and police departments across the U.S. Imagine if the military said, "We're going to go into collective bargaining." What would that really do to the state of readiness? In the business world, collective bargaining would put me out of business. It would put 90% of small businesses out of business. And it will do the same thing for the city, but the city doesn't have the option to go out of business. So what are your options? It's raise taxes on the citizens of Virginia Beach. It's raise taxes on the business owners in Virginia Beach. I've heard three or four people say, "We can afford this." Where's the math? Where's John Moss? He likes math. So this is not something that we can say we can afford without having gone through the exercise. But what will happen is, there will be inflation over the years, and there will be creep over the years. The firefighters are not the only city department here right now. The other city departments are very interested in this passing because they will be the next to come here and seek collective bargaining. Somebody talked about oppressive practices. Collective bargaining will eliminate oppressive practices within the department. Do oppressive practices exist within the police department? I'm sorry, within the fire department? Closed wage gap for women and people of color. Are women and people of color within the fire department not paid equally based on their skill set? Is there that problem within the fire department? If there is, there's a big problem for sure, and the problem lies in what I talked about last time I was here, and that's leadership. Leadership. Everybody should have a voice. Everybody in the department should have a voice, but it doesn't mean everybody has a vote. Hey, chief, I don't want to use that ladder. I want to use this ladder. Everybody should have a voice, but not everybody has a vote. Hots is taking by unions is going to make whatever problem the department has worse, not better. Constitutional right to gather, and by extension, collective bargaining? I must have missed that in my review of the Constitution. Right to gather, absolutely. And by extension, collective bargaining? I did not catch that part. This is a leadership issue. It's a leadership that starts at council and certainly goes through the entire fire department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brian Graebley. After Mr. Graebley is Andy Vaughn.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of city council. My name is Brian. I'm an Army veteran, live in a area, Chicxulilla area here in Virginia Beach. I just want to speak against collective bargaining. You know, most of your citizens right now are financially struggling, you know, with increased inflation and taxes right now. And I don't think people need to understand that, you know, with collective bargaining, you usually know, city workers within the next five years, that means that our taxes are going to be close to doubling because with unions, they're designed to only to fight for money, you know? We appreciate our police officers, we appreciate our firefighters and all our city employees, but if we want pay raises, we need to focus on streamlining new businesses and economic development in Virginia Beach. That needs to be the focus. New businesses means new employees and new tax income. We're always talking about new money. The focus needs to be, how do we develop new economic income within Virginia Beach? My name is Brian, and I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andy Vaughn. After Mr. Vaughn is Max Canano.
Thank you. Good evening. The last time I was here, I didn't do a good job of getting to the conclusion. I talked about the diffused interest and the concentrated interest. So let me first say that what I'm going to say has got nothing to do with a lack of gratitude for any employee here. Very grateful for all they do. There are around 450,000 people in Virginia Beach. These are the people who chose you to represent them. They did that because they're out busy with their own lives, busy with their jobs, their families. In fact, I was just at Cox watching my kid play tennis. That's why we don't see 450,000 people here. That's the diffused interest. If there are 450,000 people in Virginia Beach, then 10% of that is 45,000. 1% is 4,500. I think there could be more than 450 here, so let's call it 900. That's 2/10ths of 1% of the population of Virginia Beach that asked you to represent them. That's the concentrated interest. They're here for their jobs. So I ask you to please represent the 99.8% of the people who are in the city that aren't here, because that's the diffused interest. In that vein, if collective bargaining is adopted, who is bargaining against them collectively? City manager? Not really. You? No. Really, they're doing that against us, the citizens, because we elected you as our representatives. So it's really the diffused interest that they're bargaining against. And I'd ask you to not give them an unfair advantage in that. If the cities pay or work conditions are bad, people are not going to accept the job or they'll quit. That's the check, not giving power to the concentrated interest. Thank you.
The next speaker is Max Canano, and then mayor will begin the WebEx speakers.
Good evening, Max.
Good evening, honorable members of council. My name is Max Canano, and I'm president of Virginia Beach Professional Fire and EMS. I AFF Local 2924, representing 570 firefighters and EMS providers for the city of Virginia Beach. If you can tonight to support collective bargaining, please stand. Tonight, I'm asking you to vote yes on collective bargaining for the city of Virginia Beach. I want to begin by saying thank you to the council members who have indicated they intend to vote yes on collective bargaining. Our union, along with other labor organizations, began working on this with city staff and council members after the General Assembly passed this law in 2021. Since then, it has been a public education advocacy effort for our union. For some members, contemplating whether to vote yes didn't come quickly. It came after a lot of thought, research, leadership, and stakeholder engagement, but some of you made the decision to support collective bargaining nonetheless. That yes vote means you support progress, truth, a safer, more efficient city with better services, a safer workplace, and fair treatment of your employees. We thank you for listening and respecting the workforce of Virginia Beach. Thank you for taking the time to arrive at that decision. If council moves forward with collective bargaining tonight, I know there will be improvements that can be made for the community and the workforce through the collaborative approach to problem-solving that collective bargaining process provides. Let me conclude by speaking to the alternative on the agenda, so-called meet and confer. This is not a compromise to collective bargaining, nor a step forward. It is instead a management-dominated framework that does not respect city employees, explicitly limits who they can choose as their representative and for how long, and restricts what we already have in place now. I respectfully ask for a no vote on meet and confer and yes on collective bargaining.
We'll move to the WebEx speakers now. The first WebEx speaker is Fran Sansone. Ms. Sansone, you are unmuted and may begin.
Can you hear me? Okay. Wait a minute. Okay, there we go. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I ask that you reject adoption of a collective bargaining agreement and approve the creation of employee relations committees for all employees, not just the firefighter, police, and emergency services departments that initially requested collective bargaining. I've been on both sides of the collective bargaining process. My first and biggest concern is the millions of dollars to start up and maintain all that goes into collective bargaining. City rights and authority, along with those of all Virginia Beach taxpayers who will be funding those costs, are lost or set aside. And I have no doubt that all city employees will eventually fall under those five units the task force recommended and subsequently will cost the city more. I've attended forums on this, and I've heard, in the comments, rather, I've heard, the most were, "We want a seat at the table." Employee relations committees accomplish this with a sincere effort to listen to our employees and provide them with what they need to function and be safe in their jobs, especially the police, fire, and emergency medical services. Under collective bargaining, I don't believe all taxpayers will have a seat at the table, but the unions will. Taxpayers and citizens can support or pressure, if you will, our city leaders into providing employees what they need. And I'm not talking about unnecessary wish lists, like, "I want this or that." The other thing, I mean, things they need to be safe in their jobs and to perform it right. Now, there's a problem with the presumption that being in a union will make police police better, firefighters fight fires better, and so on. Again, the city providing our employees what they need to perform their jobs is a responsibility of the city, from the manager to the mayor and council and department heads, who are where the rubber hits the road. Save the millions that would be put up starting this collective bargaining agreement and put it towards what our employees need for their better working conditions, supplies, and income. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Keith Howell. Mr. Howell, you are unmuted and may begin.
I'm Keith Howell, and I live in the city of Virginia Beach. I am in opposition to the introduction of collective bargaining for paid employees who provide services in the city of Virginia Beach. If collective bargaining is improved, it introduces thousands of unelected people who have the ability to dictate what the Virginia Beach city budget will be. I have heard from those who want collective bargaining use the term "having a seat at the table." Well, I don't get to have a seat at the table. If I was to march into city council chambers and demand the council reduce the real estate tax rate at seven for seven cents, and the council refuses, do I just go on strike myself, close up my checkbook, and refuse to pay? How do you think that would work out for me? The union assumes that the city has deep pockets, and those of us out here that wouldn't have a seat at the table are stuck filling those deep pockets. Collective bargaining is a starting point. The ability to strike is the union's power of collective bargaining. As I understand it, the law at the moment would forbid employees from going on strike, but laws can change. There's also a potential of federal involvement and federal labor laws. The city might get sued, and now the city and the citizens are held hostage. City-paid EMTs could refuse to man ambulances, thus delaying time to get a patient suffering a medical emergency to a hospital. This sort of thing happened in the United Kingdom last year in the southeast. People could die. If public works, employees went on strike, refuge collection could stop and cause a health hazard, then what? While I respect the jobs that our police, firefighters, EMTs, public utilities, and city employees do, it is the job of the elected body of local government to decide the city's budget, what gets funded and what will not. Not the local elected, unelected unions. The union seat at the table should be the same as the rest of us, where you make your views known to your elected representatives on city council. That is how representative government is supposed to work. This is bad policy, and I implore you to reject collective bargaining in Virginia Beach, and I thank you for your time.
The last speaker is Brad Belton. Mr. Belton, you are unmuted and may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, they can hear you.
My name is Brad Belton. I'm a city employee, public works, waste management. I've been a member of this great city, June, the 23 years that I've been a member of the city of workers. I'm listening to everyone who is against collective bargaining. One individual stated that when there was COVID, we still had our jobs. And I need to reference that very important statement that they made. Yes, I still had my job, but they also need to understand, too, they still got their services. So it was not a free situation. The city kept running because we kept working. A lot of employees got to go home and be with their family. There are certain other departments, particularly waste management and public utilities, along with fire and EMS, are called essential services. My department got made essential services so that our residents continue to get their funding and get their services. People need to understand that the union is not like those other situations. UE 111, which I'm a member of, I'm the chief shop steward. It is an employee-run union, not this top-down thing. For all of those that are on city council who say yes to collective bargaining, thank you. For those that disagree that we should not do it, I'm hoping that we can get you to come aboard and understand what the purpose for it is. We need this so that, not just a seat at the table, so that the things that we need--
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all the speaker, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, at this point, the motion would be to authorize collective bargaining, and with the understanding that a rejection of it, the other option would take effect, correct?
I would say the motion can be to adopt either of the two options that are in your package. So it's whatever the motion is made.
Okay. Do we have a motion at this point?
Yes. I'd like to move to approve the resolution to authorize collective bargaining. I have some comments.
Okay, do we have a second first? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion.
I wanted to make some comments. There are a lot of things that have been said this evening. Many of you have said them better than I could, but indulged me for a few minutes for my comments. Wanted to read a quote from a staff member that I received that I thought was pertinent to this discussion. And so I'm paraphrasing some of the information, but the staff member said, "For the last 16 years," or "the last 16 years," excuse me, "have been the toughest for city employees. Since 2007, the beginning of the Great Recession, the cumulative difference between merit, administrative pay increase, and inflation is 1.93%. Theoretically, when considering inflation, that is 1.93% increase over 16 years. The pay range, merit increases, are not keeping up with inflation." Also, I want to note that I have not received a COLA, cost of living, increase since I have been employed by the city of Virginia Beach in August 1991. That's 33 years. Just let that sink in for a minute. The staff member has been employed, the city of Virginia Beach, for the last 33 years and has not seen a cost of living increase. So this resonates with me because I understand, understand what it feels like, working for an organization that pays you minimum for the work you do and fails to provide you with merit increases, cost of living increases, but you still work, worked for many years in that situation for low wages, substandard benefits, working many hours of overtime, not being compensated for that. Year after year, I hoped and prayed for an advocate-- Year after year, I hoped and prayed for an advocate to stand up for me and other staff members, waiting to see if things would change and what would get better, but it never did. Then I realized I had to be my own advocate, understanding my needs best and the needs of others on the staff, and understood we had to advocate for ourselves and put representatives in place who had the best interests and had our best interests at heart. This is what staff and public safety members and teachers are asking, for someone to advocate in their best interest. Well, they are the best ones who can determine and advocate for their needs. They do the work, with or without the competitive wage and compensation. Many of them have been so loyal and have stayed with the city of Virginia Beach even after having to get second jobs, even though they may not be able to afford rent or purchase homes for their families and live in the city of Virginia Beach. Some may say, "Why didn't they leave and find other jobs elsewhere?" But many did not go anywhere, understand what it is to work even though you're not paid enough because of the sense of service. It's the heart to serve, serving without the necessary compensation. That's the key here, and they've done that. I thank God they didn't leave. I thank God they kept serving. They have made Virginia Beach what it has been these past 61 years. They pick up the trash receptacles, and even during the pandemic, when it was dangerous, when it was unhealthy, they picked up the trash. They are the ones who come, our public safety, our police officers, when there's crime or we need help, they come and they protect and serve us. They're the ones who come out and put out the fires while facing death and hazards, placing their lives on the line. They are the ones who clear the sewages and sewers and address flooding. They are the ones who teach our children. They are the ones who work in this building and in buildings all across the city who make this city run well, and they do a great job, I might add. So thank you for staying even when you were not paid enough. And when some say it's not about the pay, I understand. Well, I say, yes, it's certainly about the pay. You can feel it when you pull up to the gas station to pump your gas, when you go buy groceries, when you go to the restaurant. The cost of living has gone up significantly, and it takes a competing wage to compete with increasing costs and inflation. That's just a fact. It's also, though, about having a forum to speak up, and it's about benefits. Yes, that's also true. And in fact, the collective bargaining task force, as you've heard, they approved the areas of benefits and wages, working conditions, grievances. Employees and staff, they have stepped up. They have always been there to, for dialogue, to express their views. They've done that many times, but that's not been enough. I commend the city manager because I watched him go out to speak with employees and staff and to address their grievances, providing them with equipment to do their jobs, revamping HR, implementing an ombudsman office. These are some of the things that I advocated for as well. But it's not enough to address the deep inequality that has been created, or rebuild the trust that's needed here. So extended employee committees and confer and meet and those groups, that's not what the people are asking for. They already have that now. And after the last 16 years, they want to advocate for themselves. They want representatives who will advocate for them to achieve fairness and equity at the table. And let me just say this, it's not about making anyone a bad guy or making this an us-against-them situation, because it's not that. It's about us. It's about all of us, all of us working together here and making sure that we take the time to address the fears that we've been hearing, making sure that we address the pushback, addressing them with facts. And that was important, and that's why I held a town hall meeting that discussed collective bargaining, so we could break down those fears and those facts that were necessarily not true. And so, again, I've said it many times before. I started back in 2018 when I came on board. Shortly after that, General Assembly certainly approved legislation for collective bargaining. And I was sitting at the table at that time discussing how to get it done. I've not changed my position. I've always been an advocate, and I continue to be an advocate, and today I do reaffirm my support for collective bargaining. Thank you for your service.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to say that I have always been a strong supporter of the people who do the job for us. That was when I was on the school board and then city council. And I was a very strong advocate of putting forth the STEP Plan, which cost us $36 million in that year, which was huge. And it wasn't just for the public safety. We want to make sure that every area that qualified could get the STEP Plan, because we have a lot of employees besides the five groups that have been identified. You always have to be concerned about everyone. Every person in this room is important. Every person that works for the city is important. And I know I've gone up to the janitors and saying, "Who would be missed more in a school, the principal or you?" And I think the janitors, if they were gone for a week, would be missed a whole lot more than the principal would be. I support us trying an enhanced version of meet and confer, not the one we have now, but one that's much, much more enhanced. And I also would support Mr. Councilman Taylor's idea that we should do a new market salary survey to see where we are with our
Okay, please, folks. Let's be respectful.
We were very quiet and listened to everyone that came to speak, so I'd like to ask the same of you as well. So that's what I would like to see. I know when I talked to Mayor Alexander, the Norfolk Council, that's what they went with, because he said, "This will bankrupt your city." He told me that three times in one conversation. And the money is important, but there's also a human factor involved in this. And I'd like to read to you a correspondence between myself and the city manager. Dear Patrick, as we as a council are to make a decision on this important topic, I'm looking to you, who experienced it in your last post in Cincinnati. When Cincinnati hit a tough budget time, you were forced to lay off 1,700 employees, while we in Virginia Beach only had a hiring freeze. No one lost their jobs in our great city, and this was a real-time scenario. And looking forward, if we were under the new rules of collective bargaining and you were put into the same situation, I would like to know what positions would be affected? Where in our organization would you find the 1,700 positions to be laid off? I think this is an important question if we could be faced with this scenario in the future, and we should go into this with our eyes wide open to know what consequences we, our employees, and our citizens might face. We need to know what services would be affected and the widespread harm that could potentially be done. You could also run the risk of those employees finding work elsewhere and not ever coming back. We experienced the great resignation and difficulty in filling vacancies already. This is a very real scenario, as you have experienced it already, and I hope we never have to. I look forward to your response. This is from city manager. Vice Mayor Wilson, while serving as city manager for the city of Cincinnati, I had to temporarily lay off roughly 1,700 city employees, which is roughly one-fourth of the city's workforce, due to the unprecedented uptick in unemployment and the closure of many businesses associated with the COVID-19 stay-at-home orders, which led to a sharp decline in city revenues. The temporary layoffs were implemented because the collective bargaining contracts required the city to provide certain raises, raises, not just maintaining raises. In the city, due to the pandemic-related budget shortfall, we were not in a position to provide them. After discussing the pending budget shortfall with the city of Cincinnati's collective bargaining units, as is their right, the collective bargaining units determined they were not amenable to taking furlough days or amending the collective bargaining agreement to delay the raises. As a city is not legally permitted to run a deficit, I, as the city manager, after discussing it with the mayor and the city council in Cincinnati, temporarily laid off 1,700 employees in order to close the budget deficit. Police, fire, emergency medical services, emergency communications, the health department, and other public services functions vital to safety and well-being of the public, like water, sewer, waste management, et cetera, were prioritized and were not temporarily laid off. The departments largely affected by the temporary layoffs included audit, budget, city manager's office, city clerk's office, economic development, finance, law, planning, parks and recreation, human services departments, where as much as 50% of the workforce were laid off. If you think about parks and rec, think about all the children who are in the afternoon daycare so their parents can work, those temporary workers that would probably have to be laid off. Roughly 700 of the positions laid off were full-time equivalent positions, and the remaining were mostly compromise of part-time employees. Myself, the mayor, and the council, all department heads also took 10% pay cuts. It's important to note that Cincinnati, we're not funded by the property tax like Virginia cities. Ohio cities are funded predominantly by income tax. In Cincinnati, income tax made about 70% of the general fund revenue. So with us, property tax, it could take years to recover. When we had the housing bust in 2008, it took us four years to recover. If we lost these employees, and it would just decimate our city and the city services, just think about all those departments, what it would do. And it could be years before we could come back. So I have a lot of concerns about the structure of what it would do to our city, as well as the financial implications. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I just want to give a shout out to all the parents who brought their young children here tonight and how well they're doing, watching their government in action. I think I remember a speaker during our last public hearing mentioned that they didn't see any families or parents or kids, but I see you out there. So, you know, when this subject first came up and since, it's given me, you know, a great concern, and it caused me to ask a lot of questions. We're basically a board of directors for a $2.5 billion public corporation up here, and we have to be good stewards for the taxpayers, and we have to maintain flexibility in terms of our budget-making and appropriations-making authority, and we have to retain authority over financial decisions. So that was my primary, you know, my primary line of questioning, my primary concern of what public sector collective bargaining could do to that flexibility. So I asked several questions, and I did so in front of the body a couple weeks ago and, you know, in front of the cameras. And generally, I just wanted to know, would it tie our hands when it comes to budget-making? Would it require us to spend money when we don't, we otherwise have to make other difficult choices? What happens if there's an economic downturn? A pandemic? God forbid a terrorist attack or some other global event that turns our economy upside down, and we're in the middle of a multi-year agreement and that calls for employee pay raises or benefit increases, and we prudently can't meet those obligations? And what happens if there's a change in state law? Virginia is different than other cities in the Midwest and Northeast in that in Virginia, it's illegal to strike or to coordinate through a sick-out or otherwise, or willfully refuse to do your job for the purpose of obstructing, impeding, or suspending operations. I think that's a very important point, because a lot of the criticism that I've heard from opponents of collective bargaining have talked about picket lines and strikes and things that aren't permissible under Virginia law. Otherwise, it carries immediate termination and a one-year bar to public employment. Virginia law also states that collective bargaining can't restrict the ability of the council to establish a budget or to appropriate funds. What that means to me is that even if we enter into a collective bargaining agreement, we can't be forced, our hand can't be forced, to spend money that we're not comfortable spending. It's our decision. What an ordinance, what the yes ordinance would do is not just open the gates wide open. It basically authorizes a process, a process whereby the city manager and the city attorney would go ahead and negotiate the terms of a collective bargaining ordinance, which basically provides the framework for what collective bargaining could look like in Virginia Beach. It would provide for what is and what isn't subject to bargaining. And it better, if this passes, provide protections for the city and for the managers to be able to maintain chain-of-command and managerial authority over their workplace. I won't approve a collective bargaining ordinance that doesn't contemplate economic downturns, pandemics, global events, and force people to come back to the table and And in the event we're faced with a situation where we're at an impasse, if the employees decide that they don't want, say, worst-case scenario, a salary freeze in the case, you know, if we have an economic downturn, I would like for us to be able to say, "Thank you very much, but we have the authority over how to set your wages, and we can't be forced into making a financial decision that we're uncomfortable with." I would like to make sure that any collective bargaining ordinance contains a mechanism to resolve disputes, but I would like to make sure, and again, I don't think the statute allows that But I would like to make sure, and again, I don't think the statute allows that if we do provide for arbitration, for example, that it be non-binding for fiscal terms. But it also needs to contemplate changes in the law as well. So if the law were to somehow change and strikes all of a sudden become permissible or if the statutory protection against restricting our authority over budget-making and appropriation matters goes away, we would need to be able to basically get out of the agreement that we entered into because the situation has fundamentally changed. I think we need to preserve management rights and leave the ultimate discretion for hiring, firing, disciplining, transferring employees. Those need to be retained by management. And, you know, I know this is uncharted territory. I mean, we are, after all, a pretty conservative city. And I've got every faith in our city attorney that if this does happen to go through, that it would be overlawyered and we would have every possible protection available to us. But a lot of the criticism that I hear honestly is just plain about fear, fear of the unknown. And I don't think that's a reason not to proceed. What I've heard from the workforce is that this is less about dollars and cents than it is about workplace policy and setting rules of the road and certainty in terms of expectations, where policy interpretations and gray area exists that might lead to different outcomes, you know, for one person versus another person. And I ask for specific examples because I've heard that from people too, you know, why do we need this? Or what haven't we provided? Well, I've got, I did get a couple of examples. And one of them deals with notifications in the event of workplace injuries. There's no pathway for that now because there's no designated labor rep and labor and health privacy laws prevent a labor representative from being notified in the event of an injury. So, you know, if there's an injury, time, the more time that passes after the injury, the harder it is to either help the person or preserve the evidence. Transfers. I've heard of situations where people are notified that they need to transfer, that they, that they're ordered into a new position or new job location. And instead of starting two weeks from now and we'll deal with your days off and your seniority, it's, you've got to start tomorrow or Monday. Opportunities for better positions, transfers that aren't made generally known to the workforce and are, you know, potentially given to a select few. Grievances and disciplinary proceedings where somebody deserves to have somebody sitting next to them at the table instead of 10 or 15 feet away. These kinds of things are the gray area. And that is what I'm hearing from a workforce is that where management or where HR takes one interpretation of an issue and the employee takes another interpretation of that same issue, they, when it comes to non-fiscal matters, just would prefer to have a neutral arbiter. And I don't think that's too much to ask. Firefighters literally run into burning buildings to save us. Y'all help with our sanitation, our public utilities, our, are just day-to-day city needs. And you teach our children. So for now, it's the firefighters. And all you're really asking for is an opportunity to sit at the table and negotiate the terms of your employment and workplace policies and conditions collaboratively. And I don't think that's too much to ask.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, you know, before we open the vote, you know, I'd just like to make a few comments and sincerely thank everybody for being here. And let me just take a personal privilege to say for my two decades coming on, being on city council, I have been a champion for public safety, all the employees and the people of Virginia Beach. There is no question about that. Once again, we have a tough decision up here. And because we're talking about people, we're talking about lives. We're talking about the lives of our 7,400 employees and our school employees and, you know, 460,000 people in Virginia Beach. And we got to make, you know, realize that this is a decision that will stay in perpetuity. So we got to get it right. But once again, it comes down to process and understanding. And, you know, it's difficult whether being a mayor or a council member, city manager, city staff and everything. You know, we have all our duties to be unified with community to make us the great city that we are. We have a reputation of being the safest city in the country. Our schools are pretty much second to none. A recent ODU analysis of the 14th Annual Quality of Life in Hampton Roads had Virginia Beach as the top city. 85% of the public said that we were favorable or highly favorable. Wallet Hub named us third in the country for satisfaction with city services, that what we do. But once again, you know, the timing, you know, and the U R P, that what I call the ugly reality of politics, sometimes is timing. And I always use the metaphor of cliff diving. You got to know when to time the jump. If you time it well, you'll have success. And if you don't time it well, well, you're not going to have success. We are coming off COVID. We are coming in the midst of a tremendous inflationary period that is rocking every municipality in this country. And it's not unique to Virginia Beach. Every municipality is having these type of discussions. How to properly take care of employees and, you know, once again, the fiscal responsibilities are indeed awesome. And, you know, the thing is that, you know, we always say that sometimes, you know, delaying things is not in everybody's best interest. But then again, sometimes it is because you got to know when to time the jump. And what I'm going to say is that, you know, given the budget constraints we have now, rather than taking money to hire attorneys, you know, to oversee the implementation of collective bargaining and putting in an expensive, you know, payroll system, I'd rather focus on what we can do with, once again, enhanced meet and confer. It's a different type of thing. It also requires that the city manager come to council and bring us into the loop. So that way, we have a bigger communication loop. I'd rather put those resources into addressing, which I believe this entire council believes, is the crisis of we got to get 60 more bodies for our fire department. And that's the direction I would like to go. And then, once again, as the economy approves, improves over time. And once again, if we take a little time and see how our friends in Portsmouth, you know, because once again, you know, I think, you know, Josh said, you know, we're going into uncharted waters in a lot of ways. And we got to make sure that lessen the possibility, the law of unintended consequences, you know, something pops up. I don't know, maybe even during this strategic pause to have ODU take an objective look about the positives and negatives and the potential fiscal implications of it. But once again, I do not believe this council, if, when people vote against this, it is not against you. I just appreciate it. It is a timing issue. And but once again, we have to be responsible, not only to you, but, you know, to the other folks. But let me just say, we are grateful for what you do. Let's open the vote.
Mayor, Mayor Dark, can I make a statement as well?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. And I want to thank all the speakers and all the folks that sent emails to us. And I will pledge to you right now, whatever decision this body makes tonight, I will honor it, whether it's the way I vote or the opposite way I vote. So my statement is today, in our current economy, hiring and maintaining the best workforce is the top issue facing both our public and private sectors in Hampton Roads. It will continue to be a challenge Virginia Beach faces. Without or with a serious commitment to investing in the people who serve our city, I will be a yes vote tonight on collective bargaining to help, to help mediate that concern. This yes vote is conditioned upon crafting an agreement that conforms to our current state law that prohibits strikes. This agreement also should not tie our hands as the employer in times when we need to make difficult decisions. I ran for my District 6 seat less than two years ago with a personal commitment to make a difference in the people's lives who dedicate themselves every day to making Virginia Beach great. I truly believe in my slogan, serving your interests, not special interests. I know that not everyone will agree with my vote tonight. That's the tough part of this job. It's also the most rewarding. Tonight, I'm supporting a better way for city workers to perform their job every day, knowing we have their backs. They've also had our backs and I'm proud to stand with them this evening. Thank you.
Right, anyone else? Okay, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? It came now, thank you. Go ahead and close it. By a vote of five to five with one abstention, this item has failed.
Okay. Okay, thank you all. We are adjourned.